For special meeting for Monday, April 16th to order. And I would note that Trish Baker has an pre-existing meeting with her President of Park Ridge responsibilities this evening, but is planning to join us hopefully around 7:00 or 7:15 when that meeting is concluded. And Judy Ranow, our other board member, has had a family emergency this afternoon and will not be able to be here this evening. So I just wanted the board and the public to be aware of that. With that, I will have Sue call the role.
Ms. Baker is excused. Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Evo?
Here.
Ms. Ehrler?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Ranow is excused. Ms. Scott?
Here.
And Mr. Lee?
Here.
We have a quorum, seven questions.
Thank you. We will move into item three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item four is public comments. No one has signed up on the sheet to speak. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the board? No one is here. We will move into item five, which is our consent agenda, and we are looking at approval of our April 9th, 2018 school meeting.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post. Meetings are -- minutes are approved. We're now moving into item six, A, which is our operations, deferred maintenance, and capital improvement presentation. And I'm going to turn the -- everything over to the superintendent. Chris and I are going to relocate ourselves over to the other side so we can all take a look at the presentation up here.
I'm going to go through a presentation, and I'm going to have the assistance of a number of administrators as it pertains to their building. We have with us from Nexus this evening Russ Schumacher and Jeff Manigan. If you have any questions throughout the course of the presentation, we have that resource, as well as Brad Simonson from HSR. And just to point out how small the world is, Brad and I actually did a middle school project and a high school project remodel, what, 15 years ago now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we used to live in the same community, so it's a small world.
Yes, it is.
Tom's also behind me, and he's going to assist me. This is a very similar presentation to the one that I presented to all of the staffs over the last couple of months. Tom was with me for most of those, for the elementary meetings. Curry Hirschbloner was with us, and then Connie Nagar was with us as well for the secondary. Of course, the principals, well, obviously, were at their staff meetings. Tonight, we're going to talk about our operational maintenance needs and our building and infrastructure needs. And then I'll have the building principals come up as it relates to their individual buildings. We'll have questions and answers throughout that, and then, of course, we'll talk about what next steps look like. We have an operational maintenance, and I throw maintenance in there because that's a significant part of our operational budget. We have a sustainability issue in our school district that's been evident for quite some time. We'll touch base on that a little bit later in the presentation. When we talk about Fund 10 as a board, you've heard that often, and you likely know what that is, but for the benefit of the public and the community that's listening, our Fund 10 is our general fund. And within our Fund 10, or our general fund, it's just about everything you can think of as it relates to education. It's our educational plan itself. It's our curriculum. Quite frankly, it's our programs. It's compensation and benefits of staff. That's about 65 percent of our Fund 10, general fund. Technology needs, transportation, whether it's buses, fuel, deferred maintenance needs. We have a significant amount of maintenance within our school district that would go under Fund 10. You'll recall the Act 32 project that we did in December. I don't have to go into detail regarding that. You were heavily involved with that for $26.2 million. Quite frankly, this is an extension of that. The work that Nexus did over the course of the last 18 months has a lot to do with deferred maintenance. The $26.2 million that we were able to approve in December is a great start. Quite frankly, that's just a portion of it. And, of course, all of our fixed costs as it relates to insurances, liability, facilities, utilities. It's the carpet, it's the paper, it's the computers, it's this podium. It's just about everything that you can think of. We have to sustain that, and we're struggling to do so, and we've been struggling to do so in the school district as it goes back to the referendum that was failed in 2010. In 2006, we had an operational referendum for three years that was for 8.8 million. Now, that's an average over the three years. And I asked this question at each staff meeting, and, quite frankly, I was a little surprised. I had just a quick show of hands in terms of who was here in 2006. It was less than half of our staff. And then, when I asked who was here in 2009, a couple more hands went up, but probably about half. So half our staff don't remember that referendum and how difficult it was in the school district as it relates to just education in general. We failed it again in 2010. So there's a fair argument, since 2009, we've been operating our district without, you know, 8.8 million dollars. And, quite frankly, you know, we just, we can't continue down that road. Our infrastructure needs are also very significant, and so we had the failed referendum, and then the district stepped back. And, of course, I wasn't here. Who was on the board in 2009? Chris, who was here in 2011 when we started the studies? Chris? So you can see, over the course of time, we've got a lot of new people. Who was here in the crowd, in the audience here in 2009? About half, maybe just a little over half. So we failed the referendum in '10. The district then had a number of committees to study facilities, grade level configurations, graduation requirements. Then was a consolidated task force. A number of the same people were on those committees, community leaders, staff, business leaders within the community, parents. And then, in 2016, about the time I was hired, the district, almost two years ago, the district had a conversation regarding hiring Nexus. And that really brings us to where we are today. Where do we go from here? Again, we had a number of reports that were created from the studies. However, we haven't been able to move forward since those studies, and there's a lot of reasons. We have one person on the board that's been back to those, the beginning of those studies. I think I can still say I'm new for about two more months, and then I'm no longer new. But the district has had several administrators, several superintendents, several board members coming and going, so there's a reason why we just haven't been able to move forward. The reports found out a number of things. One is that we have slow to moderate growth. And that's the information that came from the reports back five, six, seven, eight years ago now. There's probably a fair argument that we're probably flat to slow. You know, we aren't declining, which is great. We have slow growth, that's a good place to be. Enrollment numbers alone are not the cause of the district's space issues. You know, our buildings were built in the, you know, some of them in the 50s and 60s, and, you know, I look at homes that were built back then compared to homes today. Homes today are open spaces. Homes in the 50s and 60s were small, a number of small rooms, and our schools are like that. So we have to look at our facilities as it relates to proper learning spaces for education today. And, of course, the expansion of federal and state programs, and we talk about that from time to time, but that goes back decades. We have mandated programs. We don't give funding for those, as well as they create a need for more space. You know, the advent of technology and labs have created the needs for space. The needs to meet all of our diverse student body programs tend to take more space with fewer people in those spaces. We also found that the reports, in general, across the board, need to address bathrooms, dining facilities, cafeterias, physical education spaces, athletic facilities, and special education needs. Likely, most of the buildings will have challenges and needs for improvement as it relates to all of those items, some more than others, depending on each individual building, and, of course, the principals will be going over that. Also have concerns about safety issues involving, you know, pickup and drop off of students, controlled entrances as it relates to the school buildings. I always point out chloroiding. I think the front of the building is in the back of the building, or the front door is in the back, and, of course, you've got to, you know, go through a door and down a hall before you actually get to an office. We've talked about our surveillance equipment and the need to upgrade our technology as it relates to cameras specific. And, of course, the whole issue of technology in terms of being underfunded. I talked about that earlier in this presentation. We're also attempting to address that at the state level, reflecting the letter that Tom just sent, the DOJ, as it relates to any potential dollars from Governor Walker's safety proposal. I think this is as significant a slide as any. What didn't the reports find? And I don't know if it's that they didn't find the specific information here, or if it wasn't necessarily the task, but we've got a lot of data regarding all of our buildings, and at no particular point in time, and, of course, that's what we're trying to accomplish now, was to identify a solution. We just haven't been there yet. We haven't addressed deferred maintenance in the reports and the studies. We demonstrated, I think, the fact that we need to address it, but we haven't, in the past, really specifically defined that. And the district never got the cost. I think there were some costs that were generated through Ellis Construction over time, but they were very, very rough numbers, I think, simply tied into square footage. And, of course, if you have an increased cost as it relates to facilities, you have to talk about a resource to support that, and we just haven't been there yet. And, of course, that's the direction that we're moving as it relates to the need for And the issue of the grade configuration. There was no definitive solution identified as it relates to grade configuration. So here we are. We've got a lot of information that's been generated over the course of time. Nexus has done a considerable amount of work with our internal staff. Brad Simonson from HSR has been involved with some of the design work as well, and we are moving forward to address the issues that I just talked about, and that's the common themes throughout the building. We have some kindergarten rooms we need to increase, special education, flexible learning spaces. Again, that goes back to the size and design of buildings in the 50s versus today. We need additional space in our library media centers, bathrooms, fiaed cafeteria. We have a number of elementary schools that share a cafeteria and a gymnasium. Well, you know, you might want to say so. Well, it really causes challenging, challenges with scheduling, and so we tend to schedule around fiaed and lunch, both very, very important, yet so is everything else. We need to address the drop off pickup locations in some of our buildings, the parking areas, and the security of our surveillance equipment, as I talked about, and, of course, technology in general, district-wide. Now, I think we're going to jump into the buildings, Tom, beginning with Bannock, and I'll ask Jessica Champion to come up first. Please note that when we go through these, they're all going to look similar. These are the projects that Nexus identified that would have been considered during the Act 32 project in December. However, we wanted to limit the number of projects to have a limited, or actually zero increase to our tax levy. That's why we gave the $26.2 million. This represents all of the projects as it relates to need. And then, we're going to get into, and so I'm going to just pause here for a moment. And I'm going to get to you here just in a sec, Jessica. Again, they're all listed here. There's 24 issues. With the buildings, I didn't go through those, and we're not set up for this, at this meeting. They'll be ready at our next meeting when you hit that. Somehow we lost that. We'll have this set up where you can click on the number-one interior controls, and you'll be able to open up another sheet, a piece of information that gives you more technical information on that. I'm going to pause at this point and ask the board if there are any questions related to this. Now, this is a lot of detailed stuff. If we want to just kind of pass through this and move on and come back to it if we need to, again, this reflects similar, a similar issue as it related to the Act 32. When we came forward and approved in December the projects, that was a tremendous amount of time put in by Tom and the folks from Nexus to identify what were our top priorities. And these still are our top priorities. I think we have priorities one, two, and three, and the ones that are forward are all priority ones. Priorities twos and threes, we've already eliminated because of the scope of this.
So we talked about tonight, you know, it's really a purpose for the board to get that broad view of what our buildings need, both in terms of deferred maintenance and in terms of enhancing educational experience district-wide. And so everything that we're going to see tonight is really going to be broken into, you know, kind of two categories. One is the infrastructure what? So what we pass with our energy exemption projects. The roofs, the plumbing, the bathrooms, the HVAC, the electricity, asbestos, ceramic tile, those kind of very, very specific types of things. And those are all kind of whats, you know, what to fix the buildings, basically. And then, the next whole series that each of the principals are going to be talking about are the projects being proposed for their buildings to enhance the educational experience, to enhance security, to enhance delivery of services to students and supportive staff. And so, we can allow, I mean, the board can choose to ask what we want about everything, but I think we're better served this evening, as we go through this, to really have that conversation about why are we doing this? You know, if a building is proposing, you know, again, that the school has, they want additional fiaed, or they want to build a new cafeteria, or they want relocation of the office, this is our time to be able to grill our principals about why. I mean, how is this going to help what it is you're doing day-to-day in the building? Because at the end of the day, it's really important, at least for me as a board member, to know why it's needed and that it is needed. And it's very important that our community understands why the professionals working in the buildings with the students believe these projects are needed. So this is our opportunity tonight, as our principals are going through where they see shortcomings in their buildings, and through the process with Nexus, they've created some options. This is our chance to make sure that we all understand, each of us, the way we need to understand why that's the case. Because at the end, again, this is all coming down to us at some point, each as a board member, having to vote on how we want to move forward, and which of these projects we believe we need to move forward with as a district. I mean, this is what the board, this is our responsibility. At the end of the day, this is going to be our responsibility.
These are referred to as BIMs, Building Improvement Measures, and they all have BIMs. I suggest, at this point, we just identify that we do have a BIM list, some more extensive than others for each building. And then I have Jessica come up, and I've told each principal to limit their presentation through their conceptual drawings to five minutes. That's an hour of presentation, and, of course, please ask questions as you feel fit. Given that, I'm going to have Jessica come up, but I just want to emphasize enough, these are conceptual plans. There isn't, we don't have any design at this particular point in time, but just conceptual plans that certainly can change, unlikely will change as we continue to move forward.
Chris, if I can just make one comment, something that, for me, was left out, just because when you're on a board and you go through those two referendums that failed, if you look at that bottom of the 2010, what it says, severe cuts to programs, staff and maintenance followed. I believe, Tom, it was approximately $7 million, the cuts that we made.
The second one?
The second one. Yeah, it was about $7 million. That's pretty brutal. So I think in the end, when we're looking at what do we want to do, what do we need to do, remember what's needed and what the community understands from both parts, you know, building, maintenance, and do we want to move forward in our buildings, who are older buildings, you know? They need to understand it really well, so we need to understand it really well, because to make that kind of cut was brutal.
Thank you. Good point. We have older buildings, however, we are going to start with our newest building.
The baby building.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Champion, the principal of Bannock. I'd like to start out with an apology, which seems a little bit odd, but I had some dental work scheduled this afternoon that ended up being more extensive, and so I have a nerve block on half of my face. So I apologize if my speech is not as articulate as it typically would be. So we are the baby building. Being 27 years old, it's not much of a baby anymore, and you have to understand that when it was originally built, we had half-day kindergarten programming. And so they built the building, and thanks to Carl Kaufman for the laser. So they built the building with, let's see if I can operate this thing. With just those two kindergarten classrooms. And so what we're looking at is we would like to add on to the building on the east side another kindergarten classroom, as well as another special education classroom, because what we're currently doing is we are housing those classrooms in the pods up here with our fifth and sixth graders. But I have a kindergarten classroom over here and a special education resource classroom over there. So in order to consolidate everything back down into the main building over here, that's what we propose to do with that. Is there the other one, Tom, that has the outside? So here we go. So that orange section, once again, is where we would have the special education and kindergarten classrooms. With that being said, so for some of you who might know Bannock and know the history of Bannock, that this section over here on the east side, that is going to look like the kind of the twin over there, that was built after the building had already been constructed as well, and that it was originally for special education and early childhood programming. So right now, it has two special education resource programs down there. So then, what we would do is we would need to just simply relocate the receiving door for the custodians area, so that would be this project over here in green. And then, we've got some pretty extensive cement issues going on, and Don Keck has been doing a fantastic job since he's been with us as a district. You know, when those cracks get to be a certain diameter, they become slip strips and falls hazard to folks. So he's been diligent about replacing those, but we've got some extensive work that really needs to be done with that. The other thing is, is that we would like to have a section installed over here of a hardened cement area with a safe egress pathway for children who are walkers to Bannock, because right now, as it is, this is the staff parking lot on the east side, and then this is the parent parking lot over here. Buses come in and traverse around there, but we've just got a couple of cones over there. And so what we do is I have to have staff members who are out here watching to make sure that the children have safe passage for that. Then the other thing with the safe passage part of it is that we become so congested in this area for our parent pickup. It's mainly the pickup in the afternoons, that we have folks that are double and triple parked in there. I have staff members who are out here with big stop signs and crosswalks and the bright yellow vests, but it's very, very problematic. So what we would like to do is we have this wonderful space option over here on this west side, where we could have a much safer spot for cars to be able to come in and actually pull in off of the roadway, because what happens is this traffic gets so backed up, it's all the way over here to Wildwood, which is leading down Fort Lake Farm. This would also double as then safer passage for the kids to come in, where they're not having to face any traffic coming into the building either, so we'd have safe passage on both of these areas. And then, this would also double with some angled parking, so that way, when we have after-school activities, we have additional parking spaces available other than just this area. Then the other one is this red section right here, that years ago, they brought that portable over because Bannock was so big at that point in time, and it's housed everything from early childhood to kindergarten. Right now, Pacelli Catholic Schools is leasing portions of it, and the building is so old, not that the district hasn't done a nice job in trying to maintain it, it's a portable. And the furnace went on it this winter when we had the deep freeze. So we ushered all of those classrooms into the building, and thankfully enough, we were able to have space to allow for them to be able to come in. Otherwise, it would have been a much more significant hardship on those programs. All right, did I adhere to the five minutes?
You did well.
Questions for anyone?
Did you say that kindergarten class is in the pod?
Yes, same with our fifth and sixth graders in pod seats right over here. It's been there for years.
Point of discovery.
No, 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 in the pod. No, in the pod, in the school.
Yep.
Wow.
It has been. You know, and it's worked out well so far because with our safety cadets, they help with mentoring our kindergartners, and they're right there, so that way, they could be able to help with some of that. But really, what it is, is the classroom space does not adhere to what the state guidelines are recommended for five-year-olds with kindergarten.
Any board members, other board members have questions?
Just one, if the district were to move forward with one of the recommended plans to do grade realignment and to take the sixth grade out of your school, what would your space need something like that?
I currently have two classrooms of sixth graders right now at this time, Dan. So, again, I would have space available, but with that being said, we have some of our schools that are overflowing with some of the students, and that Bannock, if we were to do a realignment, would just be in a perfect spot to a perfect spot to be able to handle that overflow.
So, no buses would be going through that car drop off?
It would be much safer.
So, I guess the question that I have for you is, moving the kindergartners from where they currently are, from the pod, into this space there, how is that going to enhance educational opportunities? I guess what are the challenges that you're facing with respect? And what are the opportunities that would be provided by making that transformation for your kindergarten and special ed students?
So, what I look at for the kindergartners is that with them in close proximity to the other two kindergarten classrooms, that we're actually going to experiment with it this year, where we'd like to have more of a programming feature that's with the walls open, because that was built with the open wall concept, where there are dividers between the two classrooms over here. And what we'd like to do is for those first several days, have all of the students together, so that way we can do some team-building kinds of activities, as well as get a much clearer picture of the social and emotional well-being of the children, and actually devise the class lists to be more finalized that second week of school. So, I look at it as just an enhanced feature and being able to do that. In terms of our special education resource programming and relocating that, we all know that our students are protected who have an IUP, and that when you have them in the pod, it's pretty evident who's going in and out of that classroom space. So, it doesn't necessarily allow for the confidentiality and the privacy that's so richly deserved by those students as well.
Any further questions? It's Jessica.
Jefferson. Molly Dill, come up.
Good evening. So, we have one of the smaller buildings in the district, but definitely much older than Bannock. The main things, we just have to talk about two things that are really big changes for us. So, if we look up here at the first portion, what we need to do in our school, we share our gym and our cafeteria, they're one and the same. And as was mentioned before, that really drives the scheduling in our building, so instead of the teaching and learning really driving the schedule, it really is, how do we fit all of our students through the lunch line in a timely manner, so that we can still have all of our students receive their physical education classes during the day? And so, what we have up here, and I'm going to try out this pointer, so if you look up, no, I'm not going to do it. So, if you look up, we have our existing gym, which is on the top left, and that's our shared space currently. The orange is the addition, so what we would be adding on is we would be adding on a space that would be our cafeteria. So, we need to rework some of that space that exists currently between the gym and the new addition of the cafeteria, which right now, we have gym locker rooms that are used for storage, as well as our kitchen, and then that kind of backs into our receiving area. So, we would be reworking that space, so that our kitchen and receiving area would then be on the bottom left. That's fine. So, down here, we would, right now, this is the kitchen, and we'd be moving that down here. So, our students would be able to enter the cafeteria here, and go through the line, and then have that space without that affecting at all our gym schedule. It's just an important way for us to be able to really do what we need to do in the classrooms with our schedules, instead of having that be the main piece. In doing so, it would add on a new entrance here, where it says, right down here, and then we would have additional exits within the cafeteria, because this space out here is all of our playground, what is currently blacktop, which our playground goes around our building on two sides. So, it gives students that easy access from lunch, they're able to go to recess or recess to lunch, depending on their schedule. It also moves, we talked about changing the current locker rooms to be some office spaces and some storage, so, and an additional flex space here, which would be basically a smaller classroom that we could use in multiple ways. I can already think of quite a few, just to meet the needs of our students. Okay? All right, so, the next part that we need to talk about, our bathrooms. So, one of the difficulties that we have down in our kindergarten first-grade wing is we have some bathrooms, but they are so narrow that we can't put doors on the bathroom stalls. And so, you can kind of see where they're actually located are between a first-grade classroom and a kindergarten classroom. And then this kindergarten classroom also has bathrooms in there, they have access from within their classroom. So, what we're looking at doing is actually changing the route here. So, there's a main hallway down here, and right now, it stops here, and there's an exit here. But what we would do is we would make this go straight out, okay? And we would line this with lockers. Right now, this is a coatroom for our kindergartners. We would line the hall with lockers, and then we would close off that exit here, and we would put a bathroom stall here, that would be accessible from our special education classroom and the kindergarten classroom. And it would be a one stall, but this one in particular would be really helpful for us, because we'd be able to provide the needs for some of our students who need assistance with toileting, changing, and things like that, more privacy. Right now, our bathrooms get shut down if that's happening, so then our other students don't have access. But then we would still have bathrooms on this side, okay? So, we would just make it much easier for our staff to assist other students, and then for our students to still have access to those bathrooms. But we'd make sure to, again, put in those lockers, so the students still have a place to hang their things. That really, that's pretty much it, bathrooms and cafeterias at Jefferson. Oh, and this piece, so, many of you who may have visited Jefferson, you might know, we don't have a parking lot. We utilize parking along the street. This year, we're trying out something new, where we are utilizing some parking from St. Joe's, which is going well, but there is the opportunity to add in some stalls here, which is our current, part of our current playground area, so. So, that's it for me.
Do board members have any questions?
So, looking at this picture, the orange is showing where the addition would be, and then there would be the potential to have some staff parking. Would then, I guess, where would people be then coming into that?
Into the building?
Or, right, so if a visitor then would be coming, would they be?
Visitors would not, that would not be visitor parking, that'd be staff parking, because our main entrance is up here where the red is. They would still need to enter through door one. So, this would not be something for visitors, but it does free up the parking along the streets near the school, that are typically where our staff are parking too, so.
So, I know this is the issue with a number of our buildings, so, I mean, my son went to MacDill, and MacDill's got shared cafeteria and gym, and I, as a parent going in and out, could kind of see how that impacted, because they had to, at a certain point in time, shut the gym down. I mean, if there were partitions that were there, there was the work having to open it back up, set the gym up for the lunch, get all that organized, and take the whole thing down. But I guess, can you tell me, in a day, I guess, for your typical day, how many hours is that like an issue for your building? That your focus is on taking down?
Sure.
The gym and creating the cafeteria, and then taking down the cafeteria and creating the gym?
Sure.
And, I mean practically, how does that impact your scheduling?
Sure, so we have one custodian during the day, and when he arrives in the morning, he sets the gym cafeteria up for breakfast. Breakfast goes until, I mean, sometimes we have students still in there until 9:05, when that first bell is ringing, or the second bell, excuse me. And so, then PE starts at 9:10. So, he has five minutes to put everything away and get ready for the gym to be used for that. Then PE goes, and this is of course just our building, but it's very similar for all of our buildings because of the amount of time they have. Then PE goes until 11:25, and lunch starts at 11:25. So, sometimes what happens is we have to do, we have to close the partition, and the gym class will need to be able to hack of our gym. And the partition, mind you, is not mechanical, so that's done by hand by our one custodian. And so, he will close that, so they can continue with gym, and he is able to set up for lunch. Then lunches in the cafeteria go until about 12:25. That's getting, so one hour to get all of our students through the lunch line fed, when we have a single cert, you know, single line, fed and then out. And then PE starts at 12:30. So, there's again that five minutes until that starts. And that, and then our PE goes until 3:30, and the day ends at 3:35. So, it definitely does drive how we can schedule for our students because of those needs. And even if we had a mechanical moving partition, it still limits the amount of space that our students have, and what size of a class we can put in that PE class right before lunch. So, and it is difficult. Our custodians don't have, they're not sitting around waiting for things to happen. And so, that schedule is really, is really important for those people as well to do their job.
And then I just had a quick question. You talked about the bathrooms, and I've been in the bathrooms, and I've been just, I mean, it's not appropriate. I mean, we have bathrooms that you can't, you don't have doors. I mean, there isn't even clearance to shut doors. So, I'm assuming that this allows them to have the bathroom that's going to be used by most people to actually have doors that shut?
Yeah, so.
And then you're going to have the bathroom shared by kindergarten, special ed, that will also have the same and provides support for those students.
Right, and, you know, because we are going to share the space from both, so we have two sets of bathrooms very close to each other, we can share that space to put in one set of appropriate bathrooms, and it will be much improved. We have bathrooms that are down the hall, but for our youngest learners, they need a little bit quicker access to those bathrooms. So, I think that will really be a huge improvement. And again, the privacy for our students who need assistance, you know, we close down the bathrooms, a big close sign. It would be better if we just had a bathroom that locked, and that was the end of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
The 20 stalls on the staff parking, is that sufficient for all of the staff?
It's not sufficient for all of the staff, but like I mentioned, we are trying something this year. We partnered in St. Joe's, we work together to, we're using some spaces at their, so they're across the street on the north side, and we're using 20 spots there. Even that has been a relief. Many of our staff who are at Jefferson every day, all day long, use those spots, and it makes it easier for those who are coming, you know, we have a lot of staff who travel, so they come at different times, they're finding spots more easily. Our parents are finding spots more easily, because when they come, everything's not already parked up. So, 20 stalls there, and an additional 20, that's not every staff member, but we're making huge improvements.
Where do the buses drop off on here?
So, we're a walking school. We do have one bus, so I don't.
We have a bus.
Well, we do have one bus, and the bus drops off along Wyatt, so the bus pulls up right here where this is receiving. So, we have, yep, and so, that is where the bus drops off our students. So, we're a walk, we're a walk. There's a driveway. But they park, when they stop though, when they stop, they do stop on the street, but the students get off onto the sidewalk. They have a safe, they have safe access to it.
Kennedy, we have Claude Schmidt.
Occasionally on these deferred maintenance, you'll see a highlight in yellow. Those are items that are already in progress, that you approved as part of the revenue
So, for Kennedy, we do have quite a few renovations handled. The, I think the biggest picture, we'd like to make Kennedy have enough space to have two classrooms per grade level throughout, which is what we do, we do have. Right now, we have one sixth grade and one fifth grade. We had 36 kids in our fifth grade classroom for a short period of time, and anticipate two fifths and two sixths next year. As our, because we're small, as our numbers shift, teachers move classrooms frequently. Last year, we shared, we needed another classroom, so we had to share our room, our art room, which was really difficult. We did art room, a sixth grade classroom for a year. This year, that sixth grade classroom moved into what was our computer lab last year, and now is a sixth grade classroom, and we'll be shifting that down to the lower units as a sixth grade classroom next year, because we need an additional sixth grade, fifth grade classroom. And so, really, moving rooms often and growing, you know, how we, how we have set up and where it is in the building, based on grade level, doesn't always match based where we need to move teachers. And so, we had classrooms of sixth grade in multiple different places, and be by the kindergarten and first grade next year. We have this, okay, am I going to be able to get this to the red button? Okay. Right here, right now, this is a fourth grade room and a fifth grade room, another fourth grade room, and this is the sixth grade room. Again, this will be a fifth grade room next year. Down here will be a sixth grade room. And this in between here is our library. We do not have any walls, there are bookshelves, it's a very cramped, small space right now. And it's when, when library is happening here, and classrooms are happening here, it becomes very loud and difficult. We have signs up saying, "It's a library day, please be quiet," but it is really disruptive. And so, down here, we'd like to add kindergarten rooms here, and rooms for early childhood special education, and possibly first grade, or looking for young kindergarten as a possibility too. This room here was kindergarten until seven years ago, when we introduced all of our kids with disabilities back into the home attendance area of school. This is now the special education room, which has the bathrooms that are fitted for kindergarten. And we currently have two staff members in this room, which our two special education teachers are in here, servicing all of our students, which is often very difficult when we have students who are beginning to self-regulate. Special education moves to this little paper room right here, which is in the ELL room three days a week, and it is also used for any sort of pull-out. We are, we don't have any pull-out spaces right now that are available. We actually did some standardized testing in the gym this weekend, put up math and did a makeshift. We have, the cafeteria is used for pull-out right now, because we just don't have any spaces, whether it's just intervention or ELL services or special education, which is sometime needing to also be in the cafeteria. The plan would be then to have this be all of our fourth, fifth, sixth grade, enough classrooms in here with an additional breakout space, and then move our library to our existing kitchen area. We have a nice kitchen area, but it's, there's a big storage space here and office space. And so, having that opened up to a library with some breakout spaces around it, and moving our existing kitchen to our cafeteria, and then adding on a full-size gym. We have combined classes for gym, and like I said at one point, we had 36 for a small amount of time, fifth graders. And in this gym size that we have right now, it was definitely too much. It was, a lot of the activities that were planned had to be changed, because there's too many kids in that area. We have volleyball and basketball in there, and anyone who's come to Kennedy for a volleyball or basketball game, it's really hard. People are all the way up the ramp. I stand in the doorway and watch a little bit, but it's dangerous, and people have gotten hit with balls as we're trying to maneuver that. Any questions on this area? There's additional kitchen and receiving spaces over here too, and revamping office space. We're growing every year. We have a higher need for students with disabilities. We're expecting an influx again next year, which would be adding more children to the current special education classroom, which is already really busting at the seams.
So, if I understood correctly, it's a single back one or forward one, whatever you're discussing, where you have in the upper right-hand corner, there's no walls between the classes, it's just a bookshelf?
It's libraries in the back, yep. So, well, here's a, there's a classroom space within So well, here's a, there's a classroom space with a door here. This is the walls and doors, but all of this open area in the middle is, is library space with, with no-
With a classroom in the back?
No, right now, there isn't a classroom in the back. That's part of a library. But between the library and the classrooms, there, there's a hallway to get there, but yeah, bookshelves separating it.
So it's not a wall?
Not between the library and the hallway that's between the classrooms.
Okay.
And it's a really small space, and so there is no way to keep voices quiet in either the classrooms or in the library.
Mentioned the office and the special library renovation on the left?
So this, looking at office renovation down here in the corner, for us to be able to see, having a lobby area here, as right now, people are, are, are standing outside, and we have our, our camera, but for them to be able to come into a lobby area with the office here, and then special education and a reading room also. Our current reading room is also our bookroom, and so when teachers come to get resources, they're interrupting into the, the reading class. So, so outside also, this would be the office area and the, the gym and kitchen. These would be those early childhood, kindergarten classrooms down here on this end. What we are looking at is, because we're moving out this, so we have this nice pavement area where kids play on, we would move that here, so we would still have that pavement. We just had a basketball hoop donated by, by Pichio. We might be able to move that. And our parking right now is, is limited to here, and we have, we do have people parking here, which is currently in the middle of the drop-off spot. We just had kindergarten visitation on Friday, and it was raining, and there aren't any spaces to park, and there's no parking on the street. We had, we had kids driving, four and five-year-olds, and really, really wet. It becomes difficult just during the day. If I leave to come to a meeting, I don't have a spot when I get back. And so increasing that parking right here. We have a lot of physical space. We have a beautiful track that goes all the rain, around up here. We have a lot of green space around and room to grow in our, in our building, but we're pretty cramped inside right now. So we moved last year to having a, a one-way car drop-off that's been a lot better for us and a lot safer here, but we would like to have a separate entrance. While we do, we'd like to have our car drop-off here where it is and pickup, but we have, it's the same entrance, the only entrance to the parking lot, so having a different entrance to the parking lot. And then our bus drop-off, also liking to, we'd like to move that further away from the, the building. So right now, we have cars parked right in here, and we have our special education, which is our receiving door, and special education classroom over, right here. We have vans and parents that transport some of our kids with significant disabilities right now, and that all gets kind of mixed up in the bus drop-off. So we're wanting to have more than one lane there.
About when was the building built originally?
Well, we had our 50th anniversary, three, four, oh, probably five years ago now. So the main, the main purpose, about 55 years old. Maybe added on a little bit to the, the office area. People had a second, third generation family coming and talking about how it used to look when they were in school.
So you're looking to, I guess generally speaking, you're looking to create a pod that's gonna have walls, it's gonna allow for, I mean, your fourth, fifth, sixth to be grouped in a location. You're looking for another physical location where you can focus in and specialize on the early childhood, kindergarten at an area of the building. And then you're looking at relocation of the library to the central part of your buildings, and then creating that cafeteria, then next to a gymnasium that'll allow access there. And I guess the one, you know, I guess for me, when I'm in that building, it's just, again, the reality of the very cramped gym and some of the elevation issues, and some of the issues with your cafeteria and, and flow of kids into there and getting food. So I guess if you could just describe for the board how you see this is gonna enhance, again, that educational experience.
So this area here, we'd be adding a classroom here in the, in the back. So this, we'd be adding walls in the classroom here, and then having this front part be a breakout area, so that our, our five and, and six could be in, in this area. We actually have moved fourth grade here. And so the, the, the walls and the separation between here would be elder learning space, where we wouldn't be putting fifth or sixth graders down into any spot that we could, that we could have open. And then yet also moving the kindergartners and our youngest students down this way, who are right now in, actually, these two rooms right here, which is a loud part of the, of the room. And then our cafeteria is, is currently here. So there's a, there's a glass door here that swings open with two doors. And so as our students are lined up in the hall for lunch, all of these rooms are impacted as much as we try to keep our kids quiet, they're definitely impacted during that, that whole time. And then our, yeah, the, the flow has to go this, this way, and then, yeah, into the hall. We've tried a lot of other ways, tried to get them down the hallway, but here's our, our custodial space that is often not a place where we want, we want kids in the, in the hallways. Our, yeah, so having a, a library here and then our cafeteria moved down here is a bigger space and a space that, as you're coming up into the lobby, to this being an open space for, these are bathrooms here, but having a, a space here for the breakout, kind of a more welcoming lobby area for families as they come in. If that answered exactly what you were asking for.
So this gives you two classrooms for each grade?
Yes. Yes. And we have two classrooms right now at every grade, except for fifth and sixth. And next year, we'll need two fifth, the year after, we'll need two sixth. But we also will have one kindergarten, one first grade next year. Our current kindergarten will go down to one first grade, which opens up a room farther down, and, and that's just, you know, four or five students in our building is the difference between one or two classrooms. And they have to keep shifting people in, into rooms with little desks and little chairs and then, you know, in the middle of the, the primary wing to put sixth graders there. It's really our only option for next year. We just get a lot of spaces and putting the locker rooms downstairs and different places that we could, that we could have for kids, but we're, we're stuck right now.
Thank you.
Madison Elementary's next. Carl Banker?
Alexa. Madison School has the same issue that the last two schools have had with the cafeteria and the gymnasium. Being a little bit bigger than the last two schools, we start, just to give you an idea, we start serving lunch just after 11 o'clock, about 11:15, we're shutting the, the gym down, at least most of it. And then we're not done, and it's not cleaned up until a quarter to. So when we started working on our master schedule for next year, basically, the only kids that can possibly have FIED class in the middle of the day are kindergarten first and second. We have to keep the little bodies in there because it's a space maybe not quite twice as big as this room. So it does, it's not higher ceiling, but besides that, that, so that's a major issue for us. In addition to that, we use our art room, kind of works in the same area. Our art room gets used as a band orchestra room when we don't have art, and that sounds great, except that we have ELL going out in a little room. And I'll use this, this thing. This little tiny room right here is our ELL room, and here's our art room. So we have band and orchestra playing, not real convenient for our kindergartens sitting here and our ELLs trying to get something done. So that would allow us then to, you know, use that space now that it uses as a, as a gym. So that would be multiple, a multi-purpose room for a good part of the day, which would be great. And also our kindergarten rooms, we have four of them, these two and then these. Right now, these are small rooms without bathrooms. So we would be adding on to these kindergarten rooms. Right now, we're only using three. Since I've been at Madison, some years, we use four, some years, we, we use three, depending on the population. This next year, we'll have three, which allows us to use this room as a special ed room. We'll get to that in a second. But this room right here is too small. We can't put more than about 14 or 15 kids in this room, and there's no bathrooms, so then we have to go into other rooms. So it's not, it's not very convenient. That kind of leads into the special education, kind of cramp that we see. Right now, we have three rooms we use for special education. The problem is that we have four teachers which have full caseloads, so we're doubling up. One teacher uses, doubles up in one of these rooms, but then she also uses the library when it's not in use, and then she also goes back here, and just depending what's going on. There's just too many kids with too many needs to have two full caseloads in one classroom. So that's one of the things that we're looking at doing. These are currently locker rooms. One of these has become storage for, for our FIED, and one of these would be a special education room, which would give us some flexibility in terms of servicing. We also have a, an occupational therapist who operates out of this little room right here, can't even keep it steady on there. She can't do anything in that room really, so she ends up using the hallways. Her sensory room that she can use for kids who might be in crisis or who maybe, maybe it's a situation where they just need to do some activities. She could typically do that in here, but right now, it's about, I can't hold it, my hands are too, it's about a one quarter of this size. I can't hold it there. So it's a really small room. So we'd be enlarging this. We have a couple atrium here and here, which are really nice, except right now, if you were to look at them, they're about yay-high with adrift in it, which causes issues. When the stone melts, we'll have water in our building. So those will be sealed up and be special education rooms. So these two would give us some, a sensory room that's a normal size and a special education room. Another change that kind of goes along right here, we'd be kind of reconfiguring our kitchen area and then our receiving area to work with our, our, you know, increased kitchen size, so everything will flow a little bit better. Right now, it's a really tiny area. We only have this, and this would give us some better flow for that. The other major thing going on right now, if you've been to Madison School, you know this area here is parking, and over here, oops, over here is our, our main entrance way. So when you come to school, you go over here, and then about three-fourths of the people come here and start pounding on the doors, wanting to come in, and our kids are, "Don't let them in, don't let them in." Because they don't know who you are yet. And so they have to come around here. So it's not very conducive. We would just build a safe, secure entrance here, which would make sense based on where people are coming into our school and give it a nice flow to come into the school. And I think, I want to push to the next one, Tom. I don't, should we push to the next one? I don't think there's anything major, just show maybe the outside. Yeah, and that just shows you the, here's the, the gym, the increase in kindergarten size. Then we'd increase our, our playground, our, I'm sorry, our parking just a little bit. We do fill up this lot, it doesn't look so bad right here, and we do, we're, we're fortunate compared to summer schools. We do have a nice parking lot, but we do fill it up every day, and this would give us a little bit, additional parking to lose a little bit when we increase, and when we have access to our new receiving area. Any questions?
Board members have any questions?
I guess I'll just note, I'm one of the people that every time I come to your school, I park in the parking lot and-
Going the wrong door.
And I'm supposed to go in that first door and-
Nobody lets you in, have they?
Right. No, they haven't, no, yeah. But, but I think about it for me, and I think about grandparents, or I think about people who made some issues, and to be able to have to make it from that parking lot, and sometimes you gotta park halfway back and then have to come all the way around to that door, I really, that idea of making some internal changes in that school to allow people to come in there, I think, would be an incredible immediate improvement.
A lot more public-friendly, especially on days like today. It'd have been quite a hike. All right. Thank you.
Dean Kapke from McDill.
Hello, everyone. So McDill is currently a three-top school with two top and three top, meaning we sometimes have two, two classes at grade level, sometimes three. The goal is to move us to a complete two-top school, meaning only two classrooms at each grade level, which has us looking at kindergarten and needing three kindergartens to feed into the two, because those classes are so much smaller in size with our guidelines. So part of our academic need would be to look at a third kindergarten room to accommodate the three. This year, our third kindergarten room will be in, I'm gonna push through here and see if I can grab, in this space right here. If you take a look right next to it, quite a bit of difference between our, the kindergarten rooms. So right now, as we add a third one in, most likely after next week's visitation, that's where we'll be holding that. So we have a third kindergarten space there. Academically as well, we are looking at putting our special ed. Currently, we have two rooms to accommodate all different types of student needs. We have two special ed rooms that would be in different parts of the building to support the students who are learning those areas. If we take a look at some of the other changes, we move a second grade closer to second and first grade, so that as we do our collaboration, our sharing of students, we would have a, the one-two area, we would have the kindergarten, we'd have the three-four area, and then we would have the five-six area. So again, as we are flexing our groups, they would be moving within a small space of the building instead of right now. For instance, I have different grade levels and different hallways depending on whether I have three classes or two classes and where they fit. We, like Molly and Carl, have that cafinesium kind of a thing going on, so both of them have said the same thing. I would tell you that that gymnasium becomes our cafeteria. We set up for breakfast, we take down from breakfast. We then, by 9:15, start our Maples rotations with the FIED. By 10 after 11, our walls are going up. They come down and things are cleaned up. Usually, if we have to push it, 1:15 is a push. It's usually 1:40 when we are out of there, which means kindergarten first and second grade have to be having lunch when my, are having FIED, when my other students are having lunch, in order to accommodate everyone in that space, which means from an academic perspective that we can't teach the way we would hope to teach. Our intervention blocks, our reading and math blocks, I'll focus around when we can get people into the gymnasium, which isn't my preferred way of building a master schedule for my kids' needs. So our, our proposal has us moving a cafeteria out to the back. This is currently a playground area. We have a huge playground. For those who have been there, there's a lot of space, there's both concrete as well as green space. It has us moving our kitchen into a little bit larger space because we are now a production kitchen. We were not a production kitchen for other buildings when that was first built. It has me getting a little bit bigger office, but that isn't as cool as the fact that, like Carl, and I can't hold it, but if you can look at the very right side of that gray, it's the width of that red dot, that's my health room. You can fit a bed, a sink, and one body and maybe a child in there at the same time. So the nurse is in a storage room right now down the hallway, and she gets called to come and take care of things when she is in the building. So it'd be nice to have a space where she actually could work with students, whether they be our diabetics or others, who need a little bit more mental care in the space that would be private instead of in the office or in my principal's office, which usually happens. So this also allows us to have a little bit more storage space. Currently, our storage space for FIED is right here, so we'd be able to add on some storage space. Our receiving area changes as well. As you take a look at our outside space on the next, you will notice that we are looking at some increased bus lane area on the right side. We currently do not have enough room in our little area here to fit all the buses that come and go. So our little, like, little scholars is out here on the street or next to a bus as we load kids across that spot. We have our traffic flow, which is not the best division of traffic, but right now, we have converted all of our traffic to the right so that it has to flow in the same direction as the buses. You can't turn left out of here during your school hours, which has allowed buses to be able to pull in and much safer than it had been. The orange space that you see becomes our extension of the cafeteria, which doesn't take, again, much of our, our blacktop space up, and this extension becomes more parking. I believe it's 20 additional stalls, which is helpful when you can't park at the end of the day or even at 1:00 with all the different students and volunteers that we have coming in along with our staff. Questions?
Board members, any questions at all?
I guess production kitchen, how many schools, how many schools is your school service?
I believe we service four others, ours plus three other sites, all elementary. I believe we service four others, ours plus three other sites, all elementary.
So the existing kitchen was sized for one school and now you're servicing...
When I came in seven years ago, they serviced just to us and no breakfast, just lunch for us. And now they prep for other schools and make sure it gets out there. Jody, our lead supervisor, travels to the different sites at times to help out and deliver food or whatever that might look like as well. But yeah, they're doing a great job in the space they have, but it's tight. You can't go two bodies as you're serving along the serving line. We can't go too deep. And if you put more than three in the line behind the serving line, we don't fit really well. But you know what, they're making, they're making it work, which is awesome.
Amanda, you're up. Amanda, you're up from McKinley.
So McKinley, interesting thing to note is the first part of McKinley was built in nineteen fifty-seven. So it's one of the older schools that's out there. Had another addition put on in the late sixties, early seventies, I believe. And then the latest addition was in ninety-six. So where we have an advantage compared to a lot of my colleagues is that within the building, we have a great deal of space. What we're looking at is using that existing space that is more current with the needs of the students that we're trying to serve. So one of the things that you'll notice... There we go. Is that we are looking at our kitchen area being able to expand that. Right now, it's half this size. This other half is a boy and girl lavatories, which are also around a blind corner, which is a little difficult with first and second graders. I refer to this area as the water park. But we also have, what was the original foyer area of the nineteen fifty-seven build? Right now, that's dead space. It can house easily, I would say, a classroom roughly the size of this area here, which would be a big benefit to us because we have a very high ELL population. And what we've been doing over the past few years is kind of playing musical classrooms to try and have a dedicated space. And in my first two years, first three years actually, there was not a dedicated space other than some of the storage areas. So right now, we're lucky. We do have a classroom that we're be, that's being used, but if we ever need to go up a section, they would be back to having to be mobile again. Also in this area, because the bathrooms will be moved to make way for the kitchen, the area that was originally the staff lounge would then turn into the boys' and girls' bathroom, which would eliminate that blind spot. And the only physical addition to the building that we would be looking at would be a bump out to put in a staff lounge area. Then taking a look, again, talking about the fact that we have space, but some of it is, for lack of a better term, dead space. We have a nice, big, beautiful gym. We're very lucky with that. But part of it is that there are locker rooms, which are not normally used at the elementary level, even when we have sports coming in and out. Rarely, if ever, are they used. There's no showers within them. And we are thinking that that would make perfect space for doing speech and language. On average, we are at at least one point five to one point eight FTE on our speech and language, so we need two dedicated spaces for that. And you need those to be areas where kids have some privacy and the ability to work with that. Right here, just to give you an idea, this is the main office and the main entrance. Most people like to tell me how they went to kindergarten in my office, which is actually kind of cool. But what we're looking at with this area here, where it says sped with cooldown room, this is our current art room. It's a very big space, but it, but it comes at the cost of being, being in an area that I don't need to get to a lot in terms of discipline or staff support. These areas here are either speech and language, reading, or also our CD or ID rooms. We would continue to provide that within there, but we'd actually renovate this area. Right now, it's very chopped up. We would be able to actually make those into larger spaces that would be more conducive for serving kids. If we head to our next one, the art room then would be located in the north end of the building. Right now, this is a kindergarten classroom, and it is exactly once, is exactly kitty corner for where I am. And when you consider that our building is a city block large, that's a bit of an issue. So we'd want to move our students that are right now kind of out in the hinterlands back here to what is our kindergarten wing. Right now, these are, these, this is sensory room and two sped classrooms. This would be, this is another sped classroom, and then this is our flex room that is sometimes ELL, sometimes a classroom. We're looking at just converting that all to kindergarten space so that we have a contained kindergarten wing and allowing those two classrooms to also have bathrooms. Right now, two of our four kindergarten classrooms do not have bathrooms built within. And you can imagine that's a bit of a problem. But we talk also about moving part of the sped area closer to my office. This area is on the corner of the third, fourth hallway. And the stairs that go upstairs, we're one of the only elementary schools, I believe, with a second story. And that poses a couple other challenges. But right now, our cooldown room is located in this area. So whenever a student is having, having any issues, we are often either rerouting all of traffic or our kindergarteners who are already there are possibly having to pass through an area. And while we keep things contained and safe, it doesn't do much to preserve the dignity for the student who is in having a troubled moment or for the students being exposed to that. So again, trying to find a way to move our traffic patterns in a way that makes more sense for the needs of our building. With the upstairs, there's a couple concerns here. First off, this area is a balcony, which is a fascinating concept for an elementary school. There should never be a balcony in an elementary school. And there is no way of closing that off right now because of fire code, because we also have access there to our elevator rooms and whatnot. So it sounds though we can lock that and keep kids out of that area. So part of the renovation is walling that area off, which would make that a safer area and also eliminate some of the noise pollution that happens. Like I said, that's one of our busiest corners. The other idea here is with our five-six, which is predominantly upstairs, we do a lot of collaborative work. We do a lot of collabora, collaboration between the classrooms and the teachers. We are looking at being able to have some type of pass-through for the classrooms, either through a movable wall or doorway. But from a very important safety point of view, in an Alice situation, the only way for these kids to move out is through one corridor. If we wanted to move them from one area to another and have them not be detected, we'd like to have the ability to do that internally without having them have to go through the hallway, because exiting through the windows is not the most ideal situation since they're a story and a half up. So the, the good news is we have a great deal of space within the building that we already have. With it being added on over the course of sixty years, it's come at the expense of maybe our playground area because it's encroached upon that. But at the same point in time, the only real major work that we're looking at there is finishing the fencing on those areas, because it just makes sense from a safety point of view. The other issue that we are certainly not alone on is the fact that we do not have staff parking or visitor parking. At this point, I have, on any given day, upwards around sixty-eight adults at the building, none of whom carpool. So you can imagine, other than one, one teacher with their Vespa, we do have parking issues. The other problem with that is we like to have community events. We love hosting community events. If you've been to any of our concerts, we can have upwards around five hundred attendees there. And then, of course, that's not even evening events. So in order to have anyone have access to the building during those times, it's pretty slim. And on top of that, it just poses issues like right now what we have with the snow emergency. We don't have a choice. We have to be on the street.
It better be about eighteen, eleven, or eighteen spaces.
Eighteen spaces, and that'll help.
Board members, are, do board members have any questions?
I have a comment. As a parent, she's at McKinley twice a day, every day. Some days, I get there at seven thirty and there's already not parking. So the parking is a huge event. Or if you do go for the spring concert, May fifth coming up, they, there's, there's no place to park. A lot of people are trying to park in Domino's or Self Point and trying to sneak in wherever they can. So that, those parking spots would make a huge difference.
Yeah, our neighboring businesses are, they're hoping that we can remedy the situation.
One of the previous slides, you talked about sped, like a sped classroom or something.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, special education. I should have, should have used the full term for that. We have, with our student population, much like the rest of the buildings, we have a pretty diverse population of need. And what we're finding is that we try and be in the classrooms as much as possible in terms of servicing kids within the classroom, but there still are, there's still a sizable amount of times that we need to work with kids outside of that. And much like what Carl had pointed out, having those areas to work with kids and work with them in small groups or one-on-one, one to help with focus and two to preserve privacy, which is very key. That's one of the things that we're finding that we're short on.
I guess I, I mean, I just want to note that we've seen that with all these buildings. And I, I know when Craig presented earlier, I mean, the, the reality is that this isn't, we as a district aren't looking, I mean, I think we gotta be very upfront. We're not looking at making, potentially making these renovations with our buildings because we have a huge population increase. I mean, a lot of this is being driven from administration with respect to, again, that enhanced academics, but it's also that other piece about mandates, requirements, and just expanded responsibilities that school districts have today to provide specialized space, location, and support for students, particularly students who have special needs. And I guess the, the thing that I've heard from pretty much everyone that's come up here is that we've been kind of by hook or by crook locating space where we can locate it in our buildings and that it doesn't necessarily provide for the ability to provide that privacy for the students who may need that special support and service as well as allow for there to be as minimal of disruption to the providing education to the students in that area. So I guess the common theme I'm seeing in a lot of these proposals you're presenting is how can we best make classroom areas become classroom areas specialized to those particular grade levels to allow staff, students to be able to work together focusing in on those populations? But also then how to provide for the pull-out services and support, whether it be kids with IEP or special needs or kids just struggling during the day or, or, or us, you know, being required to provide legally what we as a school district in this age are being required to provide. And I'm hearing from you that one important thing is that, to the extent that those services can be provided in an area of access close to administration and, and maybe a little bit more isolated from where the actual classroom activity is going on, you're believing that that would enhance what you're able to provide to students.
In certain situations, and when you look at a building that is large in size, you know, we, we have one principal and, and being able to be where you need to be and in a timely manner is important. But I think where, where this might be an interesting talking point for folks is that in ninety-six, with the new addition that was put on the McKinley, the facilities that were put in and what would be the K Wing for, for special needs students were definitely state of the art in that we had tracks, lifts, a great sun, we have a great sensory room. So we, just as far back as twenty-two years ago, it was definitely a great upgrade. So for us to be only twenty-two years out from that upgrade, which puts us still light years ahead of some of my colleagues and to still be at the point where we're saying we need to do business a little bit differently for this, for what's best for our kids, I think that's something worth noting.
Thank you.
Carl Kaufman from Louisville, Wayne.
Thank you. If you could go back one slide, please, Tom. I just wanted to point the, point out the item that is highlighted. We're very excited about that. We are going to be getting new siding for our building. The building was built in approximately nineteen seventy with wood siding. And I'm just amazed that it's lasted as long as it has, but it is starting to deteriorate. And I'm happy we're able to move forward with new windows and new siding around the building this summer. So, thank you. So in, in this drawing, right about here is where our office is now. And it's, it's difficult to locate and it's also, from a security and welcoming standpoint, it's awkward to have the office there. So our main plan is to move the office area into this area. And then to take advantage of the fact that we'll be bumping the front of the building out, we're going to be moving the music room to here, which was located right across the hall from the office. We're going to expand the cafeteria and expand our receiving area, which is, which is minimal. And that gives us a unified or a, a uniform front across the, from the building. Then our library will be repurposed. About half of this right now is a special ed room with some of our most, our most challenged students behaviorally. So you can imagine the number of times that a slammed door or a thrown chair has interrupted what's going on in the library. And it's been, it's been a very big challenge. So we're looking forward to the opportunity to, to relocate the special ed classroom that is here to one of these areas. This is our kindergarten room, currently the largest room in the building, and it's an excellent kindergarten room. But we do have the kindergarten addition, which is out of view down here with four classes. And so we're planning on moving the kindergarten program from here down to here, relocating the two special ed rooms in that location. And then you see we have OT, which is occupational therapy. You've heard that the principals use the term sensory room. That's the same, the same programming, but just a different name for it. And then we do have, so a breakout spacer, which is critical in, in any building. And then we also have a special ed room in our psych's office that are located here. And the speech, one of them is speech and language. So by doing this, we free, free up some special ed space, the, and create a commons area where, so the special ed, speech and language person is not in a, in a busy, loud hallway. And it also brings the psychologist into the office area and the social worker who's located here into the office area. And I, I would use an analogy of the HR department here, just as one of your departments. If you had your business person at one end of the hall and you had your person who's working on payroll at the other end of the hall, you wouldn't have as tight a unit as you need to, to serve those functions. So having those three people in the same office area would be very helpful in serving student needs. And then we're going to be adding, by doing this, we'll be able to draw, create a hallway that runs from the front entrance way all the way to the far hallway, which will create a good traffic pattern and open up the... which will create a good, uh, traffic pattern and open up that back of the building to the front rather than having to go all around. So those are the, those are the main areas that I wanted to touch on. You'll notice, uh, here we have that front area added on. This will be our main entrance with the office there as well. And then we have a gravel parking lot which can be paved.
Board members have any questions?
What are you using that upstairs area for these days?
We have two upstairs classrooms. One of them is a first grade classroom and one of them is a fourth grade classroom.
And that would continue?
Oh, yes. Yep, there needed, needed instructional space. Another thing I didn't mention here is that, uh, we do have the band and orchestra program as other schools do. But we also have art only three of the six days. So this room, which we currently use as a band and art room, uh, shared, will be continued in that manner. And then we'll just move instrumental storage into the art storage room. They can share that storage as well.
Thanks, Carl.
You're welcome.
Kelly Schneider Chase from Roosevelt.
Good evening. So I'm going to reiterate a lot of what my colleagues said and our bill, our pictures are broken into three separate slides. And it's kind of hard if you're not really familiar with Roosevelt to kind of conceptualize it. So I'm going to tell you a little bit of our concerns first and then walk you through what it looks like. So special education is a real struggle in our, in our building right now. We essentially service all of our special education students out of one classroom. It used to be a kindergarten classroom. It's a huge classroom, which is nice, but also creates a lot of difficulties. There's a lot of noise. It's very overwhelming for some of our kids with sensory needs. And it's just a really difficult space to service kids. And it's, and when you think about kindergarten students who have special education needs and some of our fifth and sixth graders who have special education needs, servicing them in the same classroom isn't necessarily in the best interest of those students. So our special education needs are very significant in our space in our building right now. Um, the other piece connected to that is right now our, our OT PT has nowhere to go, um, similar to another building. Right now they, they, they are in our conference room, but then they too are servicing kids in the hallway. Or sometimes in our sensory room if another student isn't using that room at that time. Um, or on an art room if it's not an art day. So there's, there's just no space for those services. Um, so that is one of those pieces that we're hoping to be able to mediate with some of the changes. So, um, the picture that you see up here is, is the end of our building where our current cafeteria is. And, um, one of our current kindergarten classes is. So if you've been in our cafeteria, it very well resembles a bowling alley. It's long and it's narrow. Um, we have two classrooms in our cafeteria at any given time. So that's between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty students and it's packed and it's loud. And it's extremely overwhelming for a lot of our students, um, but especially for our students who have some sensory issues and things like that. We see a, a lot of behaviors in our cafeteria and it's, it's a lot to manage. So this, um, picture gives us, and it really doubles our cafeteria space here. Um, and along with that then would, would increase our kitchen and our receiving storage, which would be very beneficial. Our receiving space is pretty small right now. Where that bumps out, um, right now on the outside of our school is where our school gardens are. So we're already talking about places where we can relocate those so we can continue with our gardening club.
Is that following the sidewalk?
It would be pretty close. Yes. Um, right here where it says lounge is a current kindergarten classroom. And it, we have three different kindergarten classrooms and they are all very, very different in space and shape and size. And, um, they all have the same number of students in them, but some are much, two are much smaller than another one that was dedicated, built as a kindergarten classroom originally. So what we would do is we would take part of that kindergarten classroom. That would become our staff lounge. And this right now is that kindergarten classroom's coat room. And it's a fairly sizable coat room. They use it for coats, but they also use it for guided reading instruction right now. We also, it is our location in our building where we have our hookup for our swing for some of our kids who need that vestibular input. So right now we have, have a first grade autistic child who is using a coat room to get that input as part of his OT therapy. But we can only use it at times when it's not interrupting the instruction of the other kids. So it's very difficult. So we are looking forward to this space that says sped, um, becoming an OT space so that we can use, continue to use that hook, hookup, but then also have other things in there for our OT, to have a dedicated space to service our students. So now we're jumping to the complete other end of the building. So, um, right now, um, I keep pressing the wrong button. This is our, currently a kindergarten classroom. This is currently a special education classroom. It used to be kindergarten classroom. And several years before I came to Roosevelt, that was changed into a special education space. So this is the room I was talking about that is huge and is where we service most of our students out of. It has three cla, three teachers as well as our special education assistants, all who are working out of that one dedicated space. So it's, it's very busy. Um, so this would return to kindergarten classroom. And the nice thing about that is already has the coat room space in it and the bathroom space in it that we want our kindergarten classrooms to have. Roosevelt's is growing. Every year our census goes up. We are currently at four hundred seventy-eight. And every year when the kindergarten numbers come in, I cringe because we are teetering on the point where we need a fourth kindergarten classroom. And we literally can't have a fourth grade classroom. There's no place to put it unless we put them in the courtyard. Um, so this gives us, uh, this, it says kindergarten slash flex space. It gives us the ability to have a fourth grade classroom or a fourth kindergarten classroom, which as PLOVER continues to grow, is likely going to be something that we're going to need every year. If it's not a kindergarten space, I can guarantee you we can find lots of great ways to use it in those years that we may not have a fourth kindergarten section. Currently, this space right here, it's tiny, is a special education space that we use for some of our pullout groups and some of our breakout groups. It used to be the speech and language space. When we went down to one speech and language teacher a couple of years ago, we took that and used it as a special education space. Our speech and language numbers have greatly increased and we are looking at having additional speech and language, uh, additional speech and language tied next year with a second teacher. And we're not sure where we're going to put them. So again, it gives me the flexibility to give those teachers, those special education service providers, space to get, to give their services to kids while still maintaining, maintaining that dignity of, and privacy of receiving those special education services. Um, over here, we would be adding, um, two classrooms to our fifth and sixth grade wing. Um, currently right here where it says sped is a fourth grade classroom. That classroom is tiny. It's capped at eighteen students. So as our numbers continue to increase, we are stuck in fourth grade. Sometimes it's third grade, sometimes it's fifth grade. It depends on which, which grade level has the smallest numbers that we can put eighteen in there and not make the other two classes too big. So this would then become a special education space. And we would be able to move those class, that classroom that's consistently been small down into that space. Um, this would become a flex space and, um, I'm actually going to have you, I'll come back to that if you go to the next slide. So this is the middle of our school. And, um, that, this flex space that I was just talking about is right here. Right here is where our ELL program is. And this is actually a little inaccurate. So two years ago, when we changed that speech and language area to be a special education space, right here, if you divide ELL in half, the right side are where our locker rooms used to be. So we remodeled those two locker rooms into two teaching areas. One is used as by one of our Title I teachers and one is used by our speech and language path. The issue is this is the gym and the gym is loud. And being able to provide speech and language services when the gym is right there is difficult because students need to be able to hear and practice those really specific speech skills. So I would be able to use this increased special education space or this flex space to provide those services in a place where the noise from the gym isn't overwhelming those really specific skills that kids are working on. That would allow us to open this up and increase our ELL space. Our ELL room right now is pretty narrow, pretty small. We have two teachers working out of that space and our ELL population is growing every year. Um, we run a morning program. They're not able to use their ELL space to run our morning program because it's not big enough. So they travel between the art room and the library, which makes things difficult for other, for our teachers and things in those spaces in the morning. Um, so it gives us the flexibility to give our ELL a more dedicated space. No, I talked about it. I think we're good. So this is the, the schematic of where we would be adding those pieces. So this would be the two additional kindergarten classrooms and this would be the additional fifth and sixth grade classrooms. What that would impact is our, our drive here, which is used for staff. Actually would more impact, um, where we would enter more than anything. We, I don't believe we lose any stalls, um, but right now they enter here and there was building there now. So we would just need to change where that entrance was into that staff parking lot.
Is that still a student drop off?
It is. We do not drop off in the parking lot. We drop off on the road.
Board members have any questions about that?
I guess I'm just going to note, um, so my daughter just started as a teacher this year and she is an EL teacher. And she started at the beginning of the year as a new teacher, um, without having a space. And, you know, for me, I thought, okay, well, you'll figure it out. But I guess, can you just talk about the logistics? Because a number of people have talked about the importance of, um, non-classroom teachers, but the specialized teachers, um, having to kind of move from a classroom to a library to whatever. And can you just talk about logistically, again, to me it's, so, you know, I mean, I think there are going to be people that say, well, that's, that's the way it was always done in the past and it always worked out. How does that enhance the ability to provide services to the students to allow these specialized teachers who may not have a classroom to have dedicated space for what it is they're coming to work to do?
Sure. Well, I, I think we can look at it from two perspectives. One, if you look at it from a student perspective, students' inconsistency. And if, if I am a struggling student who struggles with speech and language or I struggle with, with the English language or I have special education needs, it, it may be very anxiety inducing to not know where I'm going each day. Where, where, where's my teacher going to teach me today? Am I in a cafeteria? Am I in a hallway where there's classes walking by and it's extremely distracting for me? And it's difficult to focus on what I'm learning. Our, our kids, I, our kids deserve a dedicated space to learn in. From a teacher perspective, and, and I can speak to that a little bit. My first year in the district, I traveled to three buildings and I didn't have dedicated spaces as a reading teacher. And it is extremely stressful. It is frustrating. It's hard to prep. It's hard to plan. It's hard to know where your resources are and to make sure your resources are in the right space at the right time so that you can deliver those services to kids. It's a loss of instructional time when you're traveling from space to space and you don't know, um, if somebody's going to be in that space that day. And we, we run into that with our band and orchestra often in our building. It's, it's extremely stressful. It's frustrating for teachers and it's, it, it makes teachers feel less part of the, the structure of the school when they don't feel like they have a place that they can teach from.
Do any board members have any additional questions?
Interlaced Elementary School is Washington, Ryan Rata.
Good evening, everybody. So a couple of things. The main focus at Washington, and I'll start at the main entrance and work around. Uh, Washington's a pretty straightforward building. There's not a whole lot of nooks and crannies. It's laid out, uh, since nineteen sixty-three the same way and hasn't changed much since then. Right now, as you enter the building at the main entrance, you're basically entering the building. Uh, once you've gone through the secure door, you have access to the building without having to enter the office. So looking at having, having our public as well as staff and students enter through a, a secure office situation, having kind of a, a zoned area where they'd enter into a, an initial lobby and then be able to enter the building, uh, through the office if necessary, otherwise just into the building. Also, uh, much like some of the other buildings, talked about efficiency. My school psychologist, my social worker, my reading teachers, all of my support staff are somewhere else in the building. And to be honest with you, sometimes knowing where they are is impossible. Their offices have been piecemealed and put out. Also have very small, uh, spaces for school nursing and other things. So just expanding to have more of an office suite to increase efficiency, um, as well as to be able to support students. Uh, you can also see there, uh, the, us adding into a workroom. Right now, we, we currently don't have a, a, we have a workroom, but we don't really have a teacher workroom. It also doubles as storage as well as whatever else you might guess on a daily basis. Um, so we have copiers. We have everything piecemealed around the building in the, in the library and the back room behind the gym where we store the chairs. So just looking again at efficiency purposes, having some of that centralized for staff in the main area, in the main office area. Uh, as we move into the middle of the building, you can see the library is in gray. That would be expanded from its current size. Thanks to Brian Casey for working me on this one. Point out, we have, uh, square footage wise, we have the smallest library within the district. We also don't have any computer lab or anything along those lines. So just expanding that space, uh, again, for, for us to have more resources in there. Our library should be full of books and our library is definitely full of books, but even more, uh, full of even more books as well as a, a space that we can utilize for other things on those days that we don't have library. Uh, on evenings if we're having meetings, just another space for the community to be able to access and use well. As you can see, really the, the big thing about Washington was to have full-size classrooms. Washington used to host early childhood. Um, if you look at rooms four oh two and four oh four, and that would be up on the top left. And I apologize, I'm not using the pointer.
That's the red button.
Yep. Uh, right up here. Right now, uh, those have, there, this gray area right here is actually an office that's impeding upon those two classrooms. And then those are bathroom spaces. So these are about, uh, a little, a little less than three-quarter classrooms. So looking to get rid of those, uh, two areas to increase the size of those classrooms. You can see here then, uh, why are these in gray? Right now, basically what we've done is we subtracted a classroom from this block of classrooms here to increase the size. As I said, having early childhood programming at one time, the classrooms were much smaller. Also being an ID-CD school that, uh, kind of co-located programming at one time, it lets us small specialized spaces. And it's time for us to increase those spaces into full-size classrooms so we can get, uh, any, any grade level, any body into those classrooms and use that space appropriately. Uh, much like other buildings, having appropriate kindergarten spaces is very important. Washington at this point will be what we call three top school. As of next year, we'll have basically three sections across the building. We've also been growing in terms of our numbers over the past couple of years. Um, kindergarten tends to be that one where we always grow at. Again, projecting that we're going to have high numbers in kindergarten and looking forward. Uh, we have one kindergarten space right now that's in what I would consider a half a classroom. So we've got fourteen students in there, um, which then brings the number up in these two large spaces. And then we have another cla, we have another one in what the full-size classroom. It just isn't, doesn't serve the needs of the students as well as we could with larger spaces. Um, so we putting toilets in these areas as well as, um, increasing the size of these kindergarten spaces. Uh, because of all of those changes and shifts, we do need to remodel. Right now our locker rooms, uh, to be honest with you, we're already utilizing those for, uh, classrooms. We have offices in there that we've been utilizing for office space. Uh, we, we've been using it for storage. Um, at, at this point, we're already using it that way. So it made a lot of sense just to transition those spaces, um, into classrooms and our office areas. Uh, and as you can see here then too, uh, just because we lost some toilets over here with the library increase, uh, having some, some additional toilets in the building. So, uh, the, the main changes to Washington, I guess the main theme is increased spaces, uh, for, for our students. We do have a lot of great spaces at Washington. Definitely. We're, we're one of the gems. We got a cafeteria. Uh, I do not have as many of the issues as my colleagues do in terms of scheduling. But in terms of actual space, we're using every single inch of it right now. This would just help us use every single inch, inch of it much better. That's all I have. I don't, uh, have any changes to the exterior of the building, so there, there won't be anything to add. So are there any questions?
Board members have any questions?
Thank you. Steve Proppa, we're going to sweep secondary buildings and we're going to start with Ben Franklin.
The red button, right? So we're starting on the west end of the building here. Um, you see an additional gym and a fitness center, health room, changing area, and a couple of restroom facilities there as well. Uh, currently, we have what we call an upper gym, which is originally, I believe, designed to be a storage area. designed to be a storage area. It's about half of a standard basketball court area. So, it's quite small, limited in what we can do there. And then our fitness center currently is down in the basement with exposed utilities overhead. Nope, not very good quality HVAC system down there. And that, again, used to be a storage area. So, we converted it that way. And there are some questions about accessibility to both of those locations for a handicapped individual. Not much of a way to get anybody up to the second floor, upper gym, who might be wheelchair-bound, or, and we have a way to get to the basement, but it's go, it means going outside the building and down the ramp, which typically we use that, that area in the winter time, which is a little bit of a challenge with snow down the ramp. So, it would be better if we had things on the, on the same floor as the rest of the gymnasium there. So, this would be added on to the west end. And if you don't know about the bleachers to nowhere in our building, the bleachers that were originally built for the pool, that was supposed to be there 50 years ago when the building was constructed. We have those bleachers. We could actually put them to use. And they would become bleachers for a new gym facility there as well. So, they would not be bleachers to nowhere anymore. And then, again, bringing the fitness center upstairs. You'd have these teaching stations all closer together. Additional gym space. Right now, we currently have, I think, 30 FIAED sections that we operate. So, any day, we're having, you know, 15 or so FIAED sections, and sharing the one gymnasium space, or using the upper gym, or the basement fitness center, gets a little more complicated juggling, and it drives what we can do or can't do with our schedule around the FIAED area. Having additional teaching spaces, all accessible to all students, makes it a little bit easier for what we can do with our schedule for when we can have FIAED classes. And not getting too worried about, in the wintertime, when we're trying to share one or two spaces versus, well, we're in permanent winter here now, so. It gets a little bit more challenging in, in the, with the winter months to make better use of our facility and our available spaces. Over here, you'll notice several changes. They're all kind of interlinked. And so, if we, there we go. We're gonna start here with the cafeteria space. Right now, down in this area, there's a classroom and sensory room area, our ID spaces. We would be expanding the cafeteria into those spaces. Right now, we run four lunches. Our first lunch starts at about 10:15. It's a little early for lunch. But, we make it, we make it work for now. And if we were to expand our cafeteria, we could go down to three lunches, one lunch per grade. Allows us, again, to have more flex, flexibility with our schedule. But, that would need, create the need to have additional specialized spaces over here for our ID program, because we would be removing those spaces. And then, if you look over here in our library, we're talking about an expansion, actually, over here, maybe a better look, expanding our library. But that would take out our current educational assistance office space and our staff lounge. And so, that would be why we add an educational office space over here, and restoring the lounge over here for our staff. And so, those all three kind of link together. And then the fax classroom area, there's actually three classrooms in this space. And we have one area, one classroom area, as we call it, our kitchen room, room 1200. There are five kitchens in an area about a little bit more than half of a standard classroom. Quite cramped, quite tight in there. We think we can reconfigure that area and make better use of that so there's less risk for injuries or inefficiencies in this area, the fax area. And then the other piece to look at is our entry area here in our main office space. Currently, you can walk into Ben Franklin, and after we buzz you in, you have to go in a little ways, take a right turn, and come into the main office. If you choose not to do that, you could go right upstairs. And if someone isn't glancing at the, the monitor in our office space, they're not gonna notice that you made that left-hand turn until you don't show up. Now, where did you go? So, as a security reason, we're looking at reconfiguring the entry, and then some of the interior office spaces in here so that during the school day, when you come into the building, you have to route through the main office before you gain access to the rest of the building. Questions about any of those?
I guess I'll ask a question, because it's been a couple buildings. And when I have a question, I figure other people are gonna have it, too. And we've had your building and, and one of the other buildings. I believe it was McKinley with Amanda. And it's because of the internal configurations that, that are happening, one of the, the choices that we're looking to make is we have an existing staff lounge, and we're looking to have to build or create a new staff lounge. And for me, I'm saying, you know, I'm thinking, oh, do you really need that? Or what's the importance of that? I mean, what is that expense? And so, could you talk a little bit about, you know, why you feel it's important, essential, that your building have that dedicated space for a staff lounge?
Our current library space gets quite cramped during the day when we run our structured study labs. And so, by expanding that space, it gives us more actual library use space. We can have different intervention spaces within the library, within the study labs. But to do that, it removes our current staff lounge. Our staff lounge used to be where our current sensory room is. One of those ID rooms that we would be needing to, to restore if we expand the cafeteria as well. So, they all kind of weave together. If we're gonna serve kids better through our library, it requires additional space. We're taking that from what we're currently using for, but we have to restore it in a different location somewhere.
Yes.
I'd like to just toss in a, a, a thought on that question.
Could you come up, maybe come up to the?
Sure. In terms of the value of a staff lounge, our work is very stressful. We're learning more and more about what we call secondary trauma when the staff members at a school are dealing with children in trauma. And the ways that they respond and deal with that, it affects us. And we've talked a lot about that this school year in terms of taking care of ourselves. A lounge is, is a respite. A lounge is an oasis from that, where you can let your hair down, tell a funny story, just have a belly laugh with your colleagues about your own kids at home, or whatever, the kinds of things you talk about in any staff lounge. It's a lifeline. It's a critical piece of any school. And I, I wouldn't want a school without it, so.
That's where lunch is.
That's where lunch happens, yes. But so much more than eating lunch happens in that room. Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe it's the, the word lounge is probably a misnomer for, for, for what it is. I mean, it's, it's really, it's really the room that staff is able to go to when their students are either at lunch or at FIAED, and they have the ability to not only eat there, but they have the ability to collaborate with each other on things that are happening in the classroom, or things that are happening with students, or...
Right.
I guess, for me, again, I think it's just so, I just think it's important to be able to explain. I mean, I've been on board four years, and I, what I've come to learn is that, I don't know anything about anything, to a certain extent, because I'm not in the buildings every day.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm not experiencing it. And I think it's very important, as we're talking about potential additions to our buildings and potential reconfigurations, that we all have that fundamental understanding. Again, not, not necessarily the what, because we, we can all see the what, but, but the why. I mean, why is this necessary?
I'll tell you why. I, I have a great answer for that. We've talked a lot in this community and in the broader area of our state about the importance of mental health. And, and the mental health of the caregivers is so important. When you go on an airliner, what do they tell you about those oxygen masks? When they drop down, whose do you put on first? You put on your own. And so, by giving that lounge, you give a place for the people to, to laugh and recover. And if you've been in an elementary school for any given day, and you see how hard those teachers work, or junior high, or senior high, how hard those folks work to deal with many challenges. They love it. They're great at it, but it's challenging. And then walk by the lounge at the noon hour and listen to the laughter, roll out the door. It's, and then you know those same people are gonna buckle it up, put it on, and go back to the room, and, and do that same hard, important work all afternoon. But they've been re-energized by life in the staff lounge. So, that, that's what I wanted to share. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Dan Dobrotz, PJ Jacobs, junior high. Oh, point, oh, I'm sorry. Dan. Sorry, Dan. Oh, you're doing this one.
I'm filling in for Dan.
I wrote the word, Meg, I wrote the word lounge down earlier when I saw that. I'm thinking, okay, let's not think this is a hotel. You're going down in the lounge, and you have leather furniture, and, and it's just, you know, there's cocktails and whatnot. Trust me, I've been into many staff lounges. It's beat-up furniture. It's, it's not, in, in many situations, real pretty. But, again, it's, it's space where our staff go in, as Carl stated. It's, it's a very important space.
Perhaps we should label it decompression chamber. Might be a little more offense. I'm filling in for Dan tonight. And we have one shot of the, the print of Point of Discovery School with the, this area here, toilet set. They were going to demolish these restrooms in here and open it up, because this space in the center right now is completely enclosed inside the building. So, by opening this up into more of a collaborative space, we can then get light coming down all the way to the hallway into this interior space. Also, windows would be added along the current art room here, and up above in the hallway, and then in the maker's space here, and in the hallway. So, that light could be entering here, here, and then all the way in. So, it should provide a little more friendly space, a little more lighted space than we currently have. The furniture also, there'd be in here some furniture for the discovery room and classroom areas. And then, security, somewhere along in this hallway, they anticipate having separation for security so that they could keep the area of the professional development center in here segregated from the rest of the building, et cetera, so that when people come in here to use this area, it's blocked off from the rest of the school in that particular area. That's pretty much it for the school.
Any questions about Point of Discovery? Thank you, Stan.
No, you're up, Dan.
I wasn't prepared. Although it's past my bedtime, being an older person.
Yeah, you're not alone.
I understand that. Where's the red button? There we go. Okay, I'm gonna do mine a little bit differently. I kind of divide it into categories that are important to us at PJ Jacobs. Probably the number one thing, if you look here, right in this area, would be redoing the office complex. Like many schools, when it was originally built, there's no direct access to the main office, no control of people coming into the building. Also, our police liaison is not in that area. Plus, this new plan provides for a canopy area where students can be picked up and wait for their parents at night, something we do not currently have. Most students have to wait in the lobby area, then walk out to their parents. It gives everybody easier access when they're supposed to be picked up. It gives us greater security in the building. The second thing is we have 88 concerns. Number one, on Michigan Street here, there's no way to enter the building. There's not a ramp. We'd include a ramp there. We have currently some issues in our bathrooms, and with some of our doorways, which need to be addressed. We also have a cardio room, which is up on the room, or up on the northeast side of the building we're proposing. Our current cardio room is down in the basement, which was the old band room. The only access for a handicapped person is through the boys' locker room. Not very acceptable. The second area we use that also is not handicapped accessible is the stage area. If you notice, they put a little auxiliary room there to, to help us with that area. We explored many years ago about putting an elevator to get it into that area. It just doesn't work out properly. Okay? We also put, and it's not showing on this one, we also put a ba, a bathroom in the basement. We currently do not have an acceptable bathroom in the basement of PJ's. They did put one toilet that's kind of in a custodial closet, which we cannot give access to students for, because they also store chemicals there. So, if you have to go to the bas, ba, bathroom, you're in the basement, you have to walk up to the first floor. Also, we have building infrastructure issues, like heating. We have issues with getting our heating from our boiler to our rooms. If you look on the list, many of the things on the initial list that's listed before this drawing deal directly with that. Example, about a month ago, they spent a week and a half trying to find the leak in a hose that pushes compressed air from the boiler room up to the heating units. It only took them a week and a half to find out why the pressure per square inch was down 20 pounds, which is one of the reasons our heating system is not always working. We have one person up in room 300. We've nicknamed her the Ice Princess. Because, basically, the heating is a constant issue for her and some others in the building. Okay? We also, in this infrastructure, have an issue with the fire alarm. We don't have one system that's totally dedicated to our building. We have the old system. We have the new system, which is for the areas that were added on. And sometimes, they don't communicate appropriately with each other. Haven't caused a false alarm yet, but many times, the buzzer goes off in the main office, where we have re, issues with resetting the alarms and different things like that. We also added right here the area for a structured study center. And why we added this into our system was right now, what we don't, what we currently, we had, when we got our PEP grad, right there, that was our str, our original study hall. Held about 100 students. We took that and turned it into a PEP grad room, which, we took the study halls then and dissipated them into the building in all different areas. But when we changed our grading scale, we found out that summative assessments were more important. We tried to group kids back into one large group, have multiple instructors there, especially one dedicated towards math, one dedicated towards writing, so all these people could get help in one area. The only area available is our cafeteria, which, again, doesn't lend itself well to a structured study center, especially when you have three lunches in a day. Plus, my biggest scare right here for safety, security-wise, is right there. There's some huge, beautiful plate glass windows looking right into our cafeteria. To me, that's a great concern. They did put that film over it. Gives us added protection. But we would like to close up that issue. Then some other things that are important to us. New hot water heater, blacktop repair, lighting repair, dishwasher repair, some ceiling tiles, some lighting, a paint room, sidewalk repair. Sound reduction in the gym. Many years ago, our gym looked very dingy. They painted it. Looks beautiful. Unfortunately, the paint now reflects the sound around in the gym. You can hardly hear, especially if you're older like me. And in addition, they boarded up every window in the gym. They would like to allow some natural light to come into there. That's what's going on at PJ Jacobs. Questions?
We've got some more slides up here if you want to look at them.
We have the complex there. They changed around, basically what we're doing is swapping sides. If you notice, if they could come through the new entryway, they would come into the main reception area, where they would meet the secretary there. Our police liaison would be, we discussed about swapping the assistant principal and the police liaison. From that side, we go back to the, put the school counseling offices on the opposite side. But everybody would be in the complex as you come into the building, again, limiting access to the building. There's the bathrooms. Our art teachers would really appreciate that. They've mentioned that numerous times. Another slide? No. That's it then. No questions?
Board members have any questions?
I guess I just want to note that I think, especially with respects to the two schools that we've heard of that really are, it's extremely difficult for someone who hasn't in the building to figure out where the office is.
Yep.
And to me, that's like a huge red flag. I mean, and we have so many people accessing those buildings for so many reasons, and... And the ability to ensure that anybody coming in that building is coming right past you and coming past and having that security, um, is, I believe, fundamentally essential for all.
And we have a pretty good system with the phone answering system. Our secretaries are exceptional at asking for student ID, um, asking for reasons why people are in the building, then assuring that they get to the right location. But when you're multitasking every day with phone calls coming in, the fire alarm beepers going off again because the systems aren't working together, there's multitask, we don't ever want to lose that opportunity to double check who's coming in the building. I think it would be the best move we could make to ensure the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
John, you here? We have Spash minutes. Charles from admin. Jesse, Jesse Jackson.
I'm just looking at the buildings in front of me. A couple later, I'll see what. Um, actually, I will start with some of the deferred maintenance has already been, uh, gotten taken care of. We've had some issues with our boiler and it's finally starting to get dialed in so we don't have any ice queens or ice princes in our building. Uh, that's been good. There's still some pockets. I mean, ultimately, it's a, it's a, it's a business. Building was built for business and certain things are gonna work when you move them around, certain things don't work with air. So I think for the most part, we've really, uh, done a nice job with that. They're continuing to work on our roof and that should be hopefully done soon. Um, ultimately, the configuration when I got there was a pretty good shot for what the needs were at the time. Ultimately, one of the things that didn't get planned for was, as in many schools, uh, the special education needs, small group population needs that we have. We wound up with very large classrooms, two of them. One on the first floor, one on the second floor. And ultimately, those classrooms could easily be split up and should be. On the first floor here, you'll see Mr. Shmigai's classroom broken up actually into two classrooms. And currently, uh, this would be the two classrooms that you see. I don't see a red button because I don't have my glasses on, but I got on now. But this is essentially one huge classroom with what was a makeshift gymnasium. Really good idea, except for there's glass windows that go floor, ceiling, all the way through here. And I don't know about dumbbells and glass, but it seems like a bad idea to me. Um, so ultimately, we don't use it as that anyways. We have a lot of, uh, physical activity happening at the YMCA. Now, we're working with pods, we don't have to worry about that. This would allow us access for our teachers each to have office space where they would have good supervision of their classrooms. And as well, you would have to, we have to keep our IT hub. But then that would also alleviate, uh, the need to have that LV space would be closed for both classrooms to access here. Our conference room is currently here. In our building, just the way the setup is, sound, uh, travels a lot. Uh, in the maintenance that we've done now, they've actually moved some ductwork in my office to reroute it because the kids would just love to sit in here in school suspension and listen to every word I said. So I had to whisper. Uh, was very difficult to do. So we've got that reconfigured out, it works pretty well. But this hallway here, no matter what we do, unless this door gets changed, you can hear pretty much everything that's happening currently in this conference room. So we'll slide that to the back and this will be a great workroom. We could head upstairs, please. So ultimately, what we have right now, um, our current, if you've been in our school, you have to kind of slide around the corner to Steven Gabby's room. And it's a small classroom, about yay big, and another small classroom over here for the third conference room. This allows us to keep the three classrooms that we have, but then have a working kitchen, library, learning commons area that everybody can share. Currently, this kitchen is right about here and it's in this classroom, which takes up this entire space. So it's really great. I mean, we want to have these functional life skills. But it's really hard to plan that around when somebody's in that classroom, knowing you're gonna have to go in there to visit them and/or displace them. Which would be fine if you swapped classrooms, but these classrooms currently are set up to take about 10 students, um, versus rarely every classroom needs to take, be able to take at least 15 students without being overcrowded. Um, that's ultimately gonna allow, again, for good office space, for, uh, efficient office space where they can supervise their classrooms and then work legally as a team and make sure that we have a room in each area to take care of those needs. Any questions?
Oh, how about the entry?
Entry, I'm glad that you mentioned that. So we are actually thankful, um, if we could go back to floor number one, please, Tom? Just back one slide. Our entry, um, has actually been changed and thankfully, in the world of maintenance, there's really not a lot that we can do without a tremendous cost saving. So much of what, or tremendous cost to it, much of what you would have seen at Ben Franklin is a great idea here. But this is solid concrete, the cost to get in here, uh, the cost of changing these fire doors and running through this whole system really is cost prohibitive. So ultimately, we have a buzzing system now, which we did not have and we're super thankful to have. And this is an all-time locked door now, both on first, second, and third floor. So anybody coming in off the Clark Street side, going up to the third floor to see the DA, uh, is gonna be able to use that and get to wherever. And then we now have all of our traffic go back here. We would like to have some high-quality signage so that it looks more like a school and people know where to go for the school. They get a little bit confused because it looks like a business office. So ultimately, that's what we would like to do. But this traffic flow has really been fantastic. Upstairs on the third floor, we've asked them to only use this stairwell because it's for safety issues. It's just a lot better. You talked about, um, at Ben Franklin, when they can turn the corner and go up. The same thing can happen in our situation. We buzz them in, but if they don't show up here and they quick whip up here, you know, that's an issue. I don't think we'll be able to rectify that. But to help, on the third floor, we put a buzzer on this fire door. So if anybody opens that fire door, Karen's gonna hear a buzzer that somebody's coming through there. So we'll at least be alerted that somebody is trying to come in through here, go across the third floor, and then come back down to our floors. So we've got everybody pretty habituated to those patterns and they're working pretty well to maintain that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
Now John's up.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for giving up your time tonight to hear these critically important things. And, uh, as you can tell, there was a lot of time spent, uh, gathering all of these things. So before, before I talk about Spash, I just want to reiterate that what we've put together is, is an attempt to solve some facility problems. Uh, some of these problems have been around for a long time. Some of these have evolved as our programming has evolved. But all of these things are directly related to trying to solve some specific facility and form follows function in the educational world, uh, issues. So what you see in front of you here right now is, is a footprint of Spash. Uh, Spash was built in 1972. That's when our district moved, moved the high school from PJ Jacobs to this site on North Point Drive. There have been only four times in its history where we've added on to the footprint of the building. Uh, this is North Point Drive up here. This is the main entrance. In 1995, we added three classrooms right here, next to the credit union. 1997, we added three more classrooms here. Uh, and then most recently, we've added a, an AODA compliant elevator to this corner of the room. Some of you may have, uh, seen or used that. We've added on to our shipping and receiving back here. Uh, and then our most recent one was the strength and fitness center, which is only seven years old back here. Right, so, uh, for a building this large, it, it's really remained for the most part unchanged. Um, our issues are really no different thematically than what you've been hearing all night. They relate specifically to cafeteria issues, to bathroom issues, and then instructional space issues. Our instructional spaces most specifically reflect FIED and TEK Ed. Those are the two priorities that we've been able to identify based on square footage, per pupil use, and some of the changes that have gone on in those spaces. And I'll, I'll tell you what we mean in a second. So I want to start with our, our cafeteria issue. Um, much to the credit of Tom Owens and Lori Epstein, our food service program, uh, has really changed in the last four years. And when I say that, what I mean is, um, I started at Spash in 1993. Spash, as many of you probably realize, and I know Officer Cantos certainly realizes, Spash was meant to be accessible and open. It was not meant to be a place, uh, to be hard to get into or hard to leave. We have doors everywhere. And that theme certainly has followed true with lunch. Historically, most students have left Spash at lunch. Right, when our, we plan our lunches now with an enrollment of approximately 1,600, you would like to think that that's an even 800 per lunch hour. That's not always the case. Usually ends up, sometimes it's six something versus nine something. Anyway, where I was going with this is our food service program in the last two years has served more and more and more students. Right, our students currently eat lunch in our north commons and our south commons. This right here is our south commons. Uh, it has a capacity of, I believe, just over 450 people. Right, north commons is about the same. However, our actual seating is much lower than that. So if we were to go around and count seats, right, and I can show you all this at some point, we don't have enough seats for everyone. However, some kids still choose to leave. But what we've been faced with in the last couple of years is as more and more students stay for lunch, we don't have the space for them. Throw on top of that the fact that some fire code changes and updates have required us to place all of our lunch tables within a certain area of the south commons. You have what turns into a daily, uh, really, really crowded lunchroom scene. And it's one thing when we're talking about students who might be seven, eight, nine years old. When they're 16, 17, 18 years old, we have a lot of bigger people in a very small space. Uh, some students choose to eat lunch right now in our tunnel. Some students kind of come up towards north commons, some walk around in between. Right, we have a space issue with lunch. On top of that, our kitchen is up here. Right, and when you're serving hundreds of students for breakfast, hundreds of students at lunch, and you don't have the ability to have students walk to the food and be served, you have to bring all of the food to the students. So what you have at Spash is a daily parade of, of multiple buffets. It's inefficient, it's a lot of work, it works, we feed students. Uh, but when you throw in the crowding, it, it makes for some real congestion and some, some issues. Uh, as an aside to that, if you were to look at the area in which we have our most significant discipline issues, it's right here. Right, this is kind of Grand Central Station. This corner right here is one of two doors that students have access to during the day. Right, so we really have an issue with the number of students there. So one of the first things that we want to try to do to alleviate that is to create a true cafeteria space by enclosing this courtyard between the existing fieldhouse, which is right here, and the existing south commons. This would allow us to turn our north commons, which is that commons that you, you walk through when you walk into the building, into a true quiet study area for the entire day. It would allow us then to also, uh, have a, have a spot to feed whoever wants to stay for lunch. This shot here is simply a draft of what that courtyard entrance might possibly look like if it were to be enclosed. This is the fieldhouse down here. This is the corner of the building as it is now. This would be, uh, another view of that. So again, here's your fieldhouse down here. If we were to enclose that and make it a true cafeteria or commons, uh, it would, it would stretch from the existing corner of the building, right, which is there right up here, down towards the fieldhouse. This is simply, uh, an overview of our second floor. One of the things that our, our engineers and our, the people that are helping with this are recommending is that if we do that, it would be really good to put windows from the second floor classrooms looking down into that commons area. Here then is just another shot to give you some perspective. This is the trophy case, right? We have this space readily available to us if we were to enclose it. If you look way up here, that's our south commons right now. And as you can tell just by, from a draft, a conceptual draft, this would immediately solve some of our congestion issues, allow us to let people spread out a little bit more. Now, Tom, if you go to the next one. Uh, here's another shot of that. This is kind of, if you can picture standing right where you would walk into the gym right now, looking up to south commons, right, you can see these brick pillars. Right, those brick pillars have been there since 1972 and they'll be here long, long past any time I am. Go ahead, Tom. Right, and then again here, this is south commons right now. Again, using those brick pillars, kind of coming in that upper entrance. This is the à la carte room, right? This is right now where we serve all the students their food. Right, so this would, would provide a, a true food service line for us. Go ahead. I think we've got one more shot for you here, looking down into that commons area. Here's your trophy case. This is the existing tunnel. This is the entrance to the fieldhouse. And as you can see, this would decompress our lunchtime space needs by spreading it out, giving people, uh, the option, uh, to still, we would still use that south commons area, uh, but we would not use the north commons. Here then is an overview of that footprint, right? This is right here where the pointer is right now, that new commons area, uh, melding into the existing. Right, what this also speaks to though is an equally significant need and that is, we have no public bathrooms in our fieldhouse. Right, I'll say that again, we have no public bathrooms in our fieldhouse. Right, we have locker rooms, right? We have a boys locker room and a girls locker room, right? But when you, if we were to build a high school, a high school of our size, a high school that hosts at times multiple events in one night, it's not good to have different teams sharing locker rooms. It's not good to tell people that after they walk down out of the bleachers, they've got to walk up to the main office to go to the bathroom. Right, and every year at graduation, that's, that's a real, I, I cringe when I look out and see some of these, some of these people who have a hard time getting around, much less having to walk up, uh, several hundred yards just to use the bathroom. So what this would allow us to do, it would create some bathrooms for us, it would create some storage, right? And pairing this with one of those other themes is that need for instructional space. Right, we have seven FIED teachers at Spash. There are multiple hours in the day where everyone has a FIED class. Right, in our current fieldhouse, which is a beautiful fieldhouse, we love it, it does not have the space that we need to match our instructional needs. In other words, if it's a rainy day in the fall or a rainy day in the spring, it, or snow. It's, uh, yeah. We, we all kind of can, all the classes kind of converge right here, right? Which creates some, some instructional challenges. This shows an auxiliary gym. Also shows a dedicated area for gymnastics, which is currently located upstairs in the wrestling room. Our gymnasts and our wrestlers, uh, share a practice space. That's probably not the, the combination I would put together if I was, if I was gonna do that from scratch. Right, so it would give that group and all their equipment a spot down on first floor along with other instructional areas. Yeah, the other thing that we're in, in need of, as I mentioned earlier, are additional locker room spaces. Right, so without getting into Title IX or any of those things to be compliant, we are simply short on locker room spaces. And this can be, uh, an issue, like I said, not just during events, but also during FIED classes, when you have multiple FIED classes meeting at the same time. So this up here would represent, uh, new locker rooms, some remodeled locker rooms. This little dot that you see here goes into what is currently our, our training room and our swimming pool. Uh, when Spash was designed, they didn't really give much thought to the fact that, you know, if you have a, a four-team swim meet and you're also running two basketball games, it's really not good or conducive for people to have to walk through the basketball game to get into the pool. Or for people who are in the pool to walk through the basketball game to go to the bathroom. Right, and this would solve some of those problems. Uh, another instructional space that is extremely outdated and insufficient when it comes to square footage, uh, is our TEK Ed classrooms. So this is the, this is the west end of the building, excuse me, the east end of the building. Right, this is our greenhouse, uh, that ropes course that you supported and is, is now in full swing is right here. These are our TEK Ed classrooms. And if you look at them, just by eyesight, if you look at the white in our machine shop, our welding shop, our auto shop, our wood shop is the only one that really has square footage that matches what they do in there. Uh, in machining, it's very simple. In machining, it's very simple, and if, if you haven't been up yet to see the, the machine that we got a year ago, you really got to stop up and see that because we do not have the square footage to teach what our students should be learning on the equipment that they should be learning right now to match what these businesses in town are, are asking us to do, right? So this would allow us to expand that, including some of these classrooms. These little squares right here are actually the classrooms that these teachers now use for welding or for autos or for machining when they're not in the shop, right? So as you can see, the, the square footage is just very, very small.
John, are you moving auto?
No, what we would be doing is just kind of reconfiguring that. We would be bumping off that wall and expanding each of those shops so that each one was bigger.
So people can still drive into the auto?
Correct, yeah, correct. Then, lastly, you've heard some of those safety issues and security issues. The SPASH is no different. We really need a vestibule near door number one. This is the front of the building. Anybody who comes to the, the building during the day has to go through this door, unless you're a student or faculty member. So adding that vestibule would immediately help with that safety and security piece. And then, again, the bathroom theme is significant. If we were to build a brand-new school, we would be building bathrooms in threes, a male, a female, a family or a unisex bathroom. We don't have any of those. And if you did, as they've done, if we did, if we did a stall count and, and stool availability, we're, we're short there. So this would allow us to create and remodel some of those things to add, as you can see here, a unisex bathroom as well. Questions about SPASH?
Board members, anybody with questions?
Well, I, I don't disagree that any of these items are needed. It seems like a lot of additional physical fitness areas, when that's not necessarily considered to be the most important part of an education. Not saying it's unimportant, but it's a lot of extra space. So I, I worry that it would be perceived as, oh, we're going to build a new gym, rather than all of the other things that we do need to have included along with that additional space.
That's a really, really good point. It's, it's important to remember that when we, when we talk about this, this new PE instructional space, that that's a multi-use space. So we're building an auxiliary gym, which is extremely different from a fieldhouse, right? And we're also increasing much-needed gym space for all of the programs that use our gyms. One thing about SPASH is it's, it's the building that never sleeps. And when, when we get into the, the, kind of the, the main part of, of our, of our, of our winter seasons, and for that matter, it's volleyball in the fall as well, right now, we don't have gym space to accommodate all of the students that participate, not only in FIAD, but also in extracurricular activities. For instance, this past year, a lot of people don't realize this because we have such a, such an established and highly competitive boys' basketball program, right? But we actually have a boys' varsity team, a JV one, a JV two, a JV two ninth grade, and then three JV three teams, right? And that same template follows through into other sports. And so what we're always looking for is more gym space, not only during the day to accommodate FIAD classes, but also from three PM to ten PM. Because right now, if, if, if you are on one of those other JV teams, you might be practicing at, at nine o'clock at night. You might be starting your practice at eight-thirty. We might be calling Ben Franklin and saying, geez, you know, can we bring a JV game over? So that's, that's part of the, part of the reason there and why that, that need exists.
So SPASH has always had a significant number of students who leave the campus for lunch. And, you know, we as a district have been working very diligently to really improve the lunch offerings there. And my sense is that what I'm hearing you say is that, that Lori is doing a great job and she is encouraging more students to stay on campus. But it's kind of the build it and they will come and, and our students are coming. But could you talk, I guess, a little bit about, why does it matter? I mean, what are the inefficiencies or concerns or enhancements to SPASH by keeping more of our, or encouraging more of our students to remain on campus at lunch?
And again, historically, that, that, that piece of, of SPASH is, is a genuine cultural piece of the building, the, the release and the, and the coming and going of students. And, and that, that's not something that we foresee changing. However, what we have witnessed changing is the magnet of lunch and, and the fact that depending on the day and depending on what kind of soup is being served or what, that we have more and more students who want to be there. And I think that's also true because of some of the programming things that are going on. We now offer jazz band that meets every other day during lunch. And so we have more and more students for a variety of reasons that, that are sticking around. Logistically, because we have some students who eat lunch in North Commons and South Commons, we kind of have lunch all over the building right now. And we have a need for quiet study space. Our library during both lunch hours is jammed full of, of students, which isn't ideal for a genuine quiet study environment. And, and again, during lunch, we're well aware that it's not going to be silent in North Commons either. But what we would like to be able to create is a dedicated study space that's always a study space, much like in the, in, in some of our elementary buildings where they're trying to run gym classes in the same place that they're serving lunch. We're trying to serve lunch in the same place that we're telling students that they need to go to study, study quietly because it's, it's one of two places in the building where they can do that. The inefficiency of serving lunch is significant. And if Lori were here, she would roll her eyes a few times at me for, you know, me asking her, how quick can you get them served? Because depending on the day and depending on what they're serving and what they have to bring out, and if we're running a testing day and we're running a shortened lunch, it's an issue. And getting all those options and having those things ready for students is an issue. And then packing it all up and putting it away and doing the same thing the next day is, is, requires significant man-hours as well.
On the bus garage, they're looking at an extension coming off of the garage right here. Reason being that when you load some of the seventy capacity of your buses and stack them in here, the area right behind the buses and the door, you virtually have to slide along like this. It's not the safest environment, so that's the reason for that. And then there's a little bit of cement work, but that's pretty much that. The rest are, the rest are all maintenance items that, there are no other remodeling scheduled on this or the other buildings. And then Craig, that takes us to that spot.
Well, there you have it. Thanks for your patience. There's a lot of stuff here. Those are improvements to our instructional areas that have been discussed and for quite some time and a lot of thought and professional assistance put into those. The task related to improved learning facilities really is what, what this board needs to come down to. We addressed all of the buildings, rather than us prioritizing administratively what's more important than what, is there a building that is a priority over another building? So that's where we're at, you know? Do we address all of our improvements? Do we, do we prioritize our improvements to learning, the instructional learning facilities? Do we do nothing? Been doing this for a long time. We can continue doing it for a long time. I'm certainly not suggesting that we do that. The other issue is maintenance, you know? Unrelated, yet related, we have deferred maintenance issues. When your hot water heater goes out in your house, you have to replace your hot water heater. And we have, Tom, how many square feet do we have in this, this room?
One point three million maintenance, six hundred and fifty.
Six hundred, two thousand square foot homes. Six hundred and fifty. So you can see we have an awful lot of square footage as it relates to, to maintenance. And we, and we have electrical issues, plumbing issues, we have HVAC issues, we have roofing issues. You know, that, that stuff isn't going to go away. And then, of course, we have our operational needs, and that's maintaining our programs. That's maintaining our staff as it relates to operations. That's maintaining our needs for technology. So there's an awful lot here.
Craig, if someone, if someone in the community either has watched this presentation tonight or didn't watch the presentation tonight, how, I guess, how are they going to be able to access all of this material?
All of this will be on, on the website, Sarah. All of this will be on the website. We will have on our, a link on our front page.
Yep, so it's currently available through board docs right now, so anyone would be able to access that tomorrow. Excuse me, the presentation will be available as well. And then ahead of your May meeting, when we roll out kind of...
You, you may want to come up here, please.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. My voice is going too. Hi, sorry. So currently, anyone who wanted to access, access this information will be able to do so by going to the website, going to school board section, and then getting to board doc, accessing the information from tonight's meeting was, was embedded into that packet for the public, so they'll be able to access that there. What we're working on currently now is building a separate section for the website that'll take you through school by school with the information that you saw tonight, and then also the ability to click through to kind of those BIMs to kind of drill down into that deferred maintenance piece, so folks will be able to see that. And then obviously, the information that'll be rolled out at your May fourteenth meeting relative to kind of some more information on that technology piece, the sustainability piece for compensation for staff, and then also just kind of the financing options. Those will also be available there. So we're in the process of building that piece of it right now, but certainly this information is accessible today.
So did you pass those around? Our next steps, that's just a, you know, that's just very general. That was on all of the presentations. This is a little bit more detail. This, this document, if you just spread those around the extent you can. And I apologize, this should have been prepared to have up on the, up on the screen. This will also be on our website. This was handed out, oh, a couple of meetings ago at, at the board level. You can see, today is April sixteenth. Prior to this, as I stated earlier, I presented to all of our staff at each building. There is a community focus group scheduled for May second as well as May sixteen. At our next board meeting on the fourteenth, we are going to present what the financial implication to all of this is. We didn't want to do that this evening. There's so much here. I didn't want to roll out figures for fear that's what we're going to focus on versus what are our needs, and let's have a discussion regarding the needs. Knowing that the financial implications are real and it's going to be very significant, we'll roll that out on, at our next school board meeting. We also will include in that, you know, some options. You know, are we interested in this or are we interested in this or should we look at that? And then we're going to bring community members that were on, we're bringing community gathers, members together for a focus group. Some of those, as I stated earlier, would have been involved with the ad hoc committees over the course of time. We're going to roll out this information. It's going to be packaged a little bit differently. And then we're going to have a follow-up as it relates to the financial implications as well.
On the calendar, you have July ninth as a regular board meeting. That was a date we had selected for our retreat. Is that not work?
Yeah, nope. As you'll see, it says draft on top, and that's a possible referendum discussion on the ninth. We are having our, our retreat that night.
A retreat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for that. You know, we, we talked earlier about the, the number of meetings. You know, we've, we've got a lot of meetings. This is an issue, this, these are issues that we've been talking about. When I say we, I wasn't here, but those of you that have been here have been talking about this for, for quite some time. We've been talking about it since I've been here, going on two years. Nexus has been involved for the last two years, HSR the last year. It's my intent to keep bringing this forward and just keep moving forward until we are comfortable and then we get to a point where we believe we can make some decisions.
So Craig, a couple things. First of all, I really appreciate the principals coming forward and bringing forward the information from their schools. You know, because I was involved with other referendums and the facility studies and that, I have to say, I don't know exactly how the community will hear what we heard. I, I honestly did not hear anything that said, boy, this would be a nice thing to have. And that's not what our community is. And I, and I've, everything I heard was, this is what's happening and this was what should be happening for the students in our buildings and the reasons why, which is great. So will we be getting then a different discussion about the deferred maintenance and the cost of the deferred maintenance versus this?
You'll get a breakdown regarding the improvements to the learning facilities.
Right.
The information that was just given to you.
Right.
You'll also be giving, giving costs related to deferred maintenance, what that looks like, what are the dollars amount, as well as cost on what an operational sustainability budget would look like.
Okay. And with that, the impact on what it would, would cost taxpayers?
Yes, we'll have all the information regarding comparables as it relates to our neighbors, cost per student, where we are today with cost per student.
Sure.
In the event that we do this or something else.
Okay.
What the cost implications will be, and then comparisons in terms of what it's going to look like compared to our neighbors. You know, where does it move us?
Okay. So as you did in the, the twenty-six million, you prioritized and said, this is, this is really, these are the priority, we think these are high priorities. Will you do that with the deferred maintenance?
Yes, yes, we, we've done that. And it's the BIMs that, that were, were presented today, that we, we really didn't go over the BIMs.
Okay.
We can go over those in greater detail. We have prioritized those. We had, I believe, priority ones, twos and threes when we started this. We eliminated the twos and threes. These are only the number one priorities. It's that substantial.
Right. And a lot of the details, when you talk about some of the deferred maintenance, I mean, seriously, we're not going to understand every one of those.
We can give some, you know, some good examples. And maybe that's a good time for, for Nexus to stop, to step up right now and talk a little bit about the BIMs. You know, I say it's HVAC, it's plumbing, it's, it's electrical. If you want to just take five minutes and, and address that, please.
Sure, we actually summarized some of that into a presentation that we could share, whenever it makes sense. You know, you'll see a lot of common issues, you know, controls, lighting, HVAC, some steam systems. You've taken a lot of, taken care of some of your electrical main infrastructure, which is great, so it gets us off to a great start. But then what we connect on to that, again, some of the minor panels downstream. So basically focusing on your electrical, your parking lots. roofing, all of the envelope pieces, like you say, everything above the ceiling that you may or may not wanna hear about, your plumbing lines, the galvanized plumbing lines that are running through a lot of your buildings where the galvanization is, is starting to chip off and starting to leak. So what we did is we, we had, we had the three levels of prioritization, wrangled around those, talked it through with the maintenance staff, with Tom, with, with the people on, on, on site, and then reprioritized those based on what we heard, and then dug in for more detail, and then built that list. And now it's that, you know, priority ones are the only ones that are on there, and it's, then again, the chance for you guys to take a look at and see if you believe they're priority ones, and if we have to whittle that down even more as we work through the process. But it, it can be presented in such a way that it's, you know, we, we, a lot of us are engineers, and we, we, we realize that we wanna keep it as a high level as possible from, you know, what is the issue? What type of issues are the, the decaying system, so to speak, causing? What we recommend is solutions and then budgets, but we can go as shallow or as deep as you want. But what we would intend to do is basically go through each school, show a few representative pictures, and then kind of summarize what's happening in each school, and then each of the line items would be individually budgeted for you to decide, you know, what's important.
The one other thing I would, I would wonder about, and I don't know when this would come up, but obviously, when you hear the presentation we heard tonight, this isn't gonna be done. Whatever we do won't be done in a year, or, you know, so some, some foresight of timeline, depending on what the decisions are made, would be a little helpful, especially for the community, obviously. You know, SPASH is gonna take a lot longer than-
It's, it's a multi-year process without a doubt.
Sure, sure.
And a lot of it depends on the initial feedback we get, and then we can, we can put together definitely a very visual overall schedule plan that, that you guys could take a look at.
Thanks.
Thanks, that's a great question, the timeline, and again, we'll talk towards that next time because the way we structure a referendum and structured debt ties into it as well.
Sure.
But if we wanted to do all of this right away, this is an awful lot of work. Right away is gonna take a long time, that's gonna take multiple years. But we'll have a lot, we'll have all of that information at our next meeting, Nexus will be back, Brad, you coming?
Sure.
Why not, huh?
Anytime.
And so we'll go into greater detail, there's an awful lot here. And then again, the BIMs that we prioritize as ones, yep, we can prioritize ones into ones and twos and threes. But I think next time when we talk about numbers, you're gonna have, not that you, you may have a lot of questions right now. When you see figures, I think that's really gonna be when the, when the conversation starts. This is a record, nine thirty, almost, right?
Right.
I think it could be our record so far.
So here's my question.
Since I've been here.
Yeah, since you've been here.
The latest?
Oh, for the latest?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess I have a question because you, I know you've been out to all of the buildings and you've talked to all our staff, at least made the presentation or a variety of presentations with respect to everyone. And I guess I'd like you to let the board, let us all know, how is that informed? What was brought forward to us this evening?
We surveyed all of our staff after the meetings, we'll bring, bring that forward at a later meeting when we have the Nexus survey results as well. It was very positive, and keep in mind when we looked for results or, or feedback, it's from a very general standpoint. You know, you, you saw it today, if you're gonna take a look at any of these buildings and put a different group of people in the room, they're all gonna have an opinion on, well, why wouldn't we do this, why are we doing that, let's move that. So from just a very, we're asking from a very high-level, general standpoint, does this make sense in your building for these improvements? And you'll find that the, the data, when we bring that forward from, from our survey will be very positive. And through those meetings, and that's where I had Connie and Cory at each of those meetings taking notes. There was a lot of very good questions that, that were generated that will continue to get incorporated into what we do. This is, this is a, a big deal, and it's fairly complicated.
So do board members have any other questions? I'm assuming board members are welcome to go out and take a look at any of our buildings and maybe be able to get that practical on-the-ground visual of what it is that's being proposed. And again, if any of us have any questions that we wanna run by particular principals, I know they're always incredibly helpful and supportive about getting us the information.
Yeah, you're absolutely welcome to go to any of the buildings, please contact me first so I can contact the principal, and then it might be appropriate as well to have either Tom or maybe myself go with you.
That was gonna be my comment, just there's a couple of principals that I've been meaning to get together with, John Volendorf is one, and I just haven't made it over there. And, and I would like to see some of these things specifically, like go back in the tech room and so forth. So, but you want us to contact you first as opposed to?
Ah, you can go ahead, and I guess you can go ahead and contact the principal, but I wanna be contacted too so I can, I know what's going on.
No problem.
Cause I, if, if, if my schedule is available, I'd like to, you know, to go with you. The more I'm with people that are looking, the decision-makers, the more beneficial that will be for me.
Okay. I think we're at the point in our agenda where we need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor with a aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Here tomorrow, nine o'clock?
Yep.
And what time did you have, Tom? Yeah, that's, that's perfect, that sounds better actually.
All right.